All right. With that, then, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, about 20 minutes of 10. And certainly welcome all the folks to our meeting today. We're going to start with a clerk call to roll and establish a quorum, and then we'll make some announcements and do our pledge allegiance and get on with our order of business. All right.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy. Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting is open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off-agenda matters, and when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium to make your comment. You may also send written comments to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance, and thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Well, thank you, Flo. And with that, I'm going to ask Dave DeFonte, since he got us the flag, to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Wow, all right. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. Before we go in and start on our order of business, I just wanted to express some appreciation and thanks to all the folks that helped us be here this morning. Certainly welcome colleagues and county staff and all of the folks that are joining with us here this morning, but want to thank, again, all the technical advisors, the folks that have done the setup and so forth, and thank our hosts, the County Office of Education, Sacramento County Office of Education. Flo, did you want to offer any comments? I know your folks have been working feverishly along with our technical staff for the broadcast and so forth, so if you wanted to offer any particular thanks to list folks, please take the opportunity to do that.
I do. I want to thank the County Exec's Office for supporting us and allowing us to make a beautiful event for you all, and I especially want to thank the clerk of the Board and DTAC staff. They have been instrumental in making this happen. They're a wonderful group of people, and you guys are so blessed to have such a high level of professionals. They really could go into business in event planning, but I just want to thank you for that opportunity to be a part of this, and I hope that you all have a wonderful meeting and a discussion, you know, with your leadership. It's just a blessing to work here, so thank you.
Thanks, Flo. Well, how about a round of applause? Let's get warmed up here, and thank you, everybody. Great. Well, I would echo those thanks, and I know that throughout the course of the day, we'll be accommodated certainly in this room, but also with transportation and get a chance, I think, to see the Mather Community Campus a little later today. I also want to just note, this is actually our first retreat since the last one we had, which was actually in District One at the Fruit Ridge Collaborative, I believe, just at the advent of the COVID outbreak and pandemic, and so, again, it's nice to be back in this setting to have the opportunity to sit with colleagues and certainly with our administrative and professional staff, and to have audience members join us for an opportunity to focus on some items that are of importance to this county going forward and certainly to reflect on, I think, some of the investments that have been made and some of the work that's been done and continues to be done on a daily basis to serve people in our community. And so, again, I want to thank Ann Edwards, our County Executive, and certainly the executive staff for preparing for this morning, but also just acknowledge, again, that this was done annually. Actually, we'd gone into an approach that we were kind of doing semi-annually for a while, and then, obviously, with the pandemic, we weren't able to gather in this setting, but it's nice to be back and certainly look forward to a real productive day. So with that, unless, in my colleagues, any comments you wanted to make, we can go right into the County Exec and move into our agenda, so.
Well, thank you, Supervisor Natoli, and good morning and welcome, everybody. I'm really excited about today. As Supervisor Natoli said, we haven't had a board retreat in almost three years, so it's really nice to have everybody together in a little bit more informal setting. Today, we've got a lot of exciting things to talk about. We will be giving an overview of the Mather Community Campus and all of the programs that are there with a very targeted presentation about some of the homeless programs there. And then, of course, the big item of the day is the development review process, and Dave is going to be talking more about that, but I just think it's really important. All of you Board members said to me early on, when you appointed me, that this was a big issue for you around wanting to improve the development review process, which is why we hired a consultant to help us, so you'll be hearing all about the findings and the recommendations and really hoping to have a good dialogue around that today. And in addition to you all wanting it, I think it's important to know that I really want it too. So one of the things that's really important to me, as many of you know, is customer service, and so if we can improve our customer service in that development review process, I think it's really important. I had a saying when I was at DHA around customer service, because we really focused on that, is I asked people to apply the "mom" test, and people were like, "Well, what's the mom test?" I said, "The mom test is if someone asks you, 'Hey, I need some services from DHA,' or "in development," or whatever, would you pick out a special person to help your mom, or if you don't like your mom, someone in your family that you really care about? Or would you just say, 'Here's the number you call, it's the main number,' and have confidence that everyone that responds will treat your mom or your loved one the way you would want them to?" So that's what is really important to me in this and every process within the county. So I'm excited about moving forward on this, and then, of course, the end of the day, Dawn, we're going to have a little tribute to you, so looking forward to the day. Thanks, everyone.
I don't know if you cleared that with the chair or not, so we'll see. Anyway, no, I know, I know. Thank you, Ann. Okay. Well, again, I think, just as you've said, and I think a good example, so maybe our new standard ought to be if you can meet or exceed the "mom" test, then we're doing really good, so. And with that, again, I just would apologize to the folks in the audience, because I have my back to you, so if there are folks that rise to speak, I know we, once we have the presentation, somebody will have to assist me with that. We have speaker forums, and I know we have a number of staff members, but certainly don't want to ignore folks if they want to weigh in as we go through the agenda here today, so. Thank you for those opening comments, Ann, and with that, then, if you'll call the item, I guess, ma'am clerk, if everybody's ready to go, let's dive right in.
Okay. Item one, staff presentation of report Sacramento County Development Review Process Assessment and Recommendations.
Okay, and I believe Mr. DeFonte, who's going to be assisted by several others, is going to do our presentation, so, Dave?
Yeah, so Dave DeFonte, Deputy Kenny, Executive of Community Services, and, you know, my hope for today is a bit less of a presentation and me talking at you for a couple hours and more of a discussion, and, you know, part of, you know, Flo and others in helping to design this room was to facilitate just that, and fantastic job. This is exactly what we were looking for, to have a dialogue early on in the process, having just received the report a matter of weeks ago. So very happy to be here and excited that we get to have this type of venue for this discussion early on before we truly launch into this process. So very quickly, just a quick review of the sub-agenda. We'll touch on the report, both the background and the purpose of it. I also want to talk about some of the recent successes over the last year, things that county staff has implemented already before the report was even received, along with some ongoing challenges that we're facing that I think will be no surprise to the Board. Obviously, the main event today will be talking through the recommendations, and I'll, we'll take quite a bit of time to actually do that, and I'll have a number of questions for the Board along the way, and then we'll talk about next steps in implementing many of the recommendations in the report. So as we launch into the discussion, there's really three things to keep in mind, at least three things that I would be looking for from the Board when we talk about the recommendations, and the first being prioritization. So what recommendations are your highest priority to focus on first? We can't do all the things all at once, so we really want to make sure that we're focusing on the highest value targets right from the onset. The second is whether or not any recommendations, in your opinion, should be revised or not implemented at all or not implemented as provided, so we can course correct early on if need be. And then, third, if there's any process improvements that you're thinking of that aren't captured in the report, because there's a lot of great recommendations in here, but there are certainly things from maybe your perspective or department perspectives that we could be launching that aren't addressed fully in the report. So with that, Flo, next slide, please. So as to Board Direction and CEO Expectations, you know, Ann's already touched on this. You know, I've heard from many of you, both individually and as a Board, that this is a very high priority for you, a very, very high priority to address our development review process, focus more on customer service, efficiency, et cetera. You know, that direction has obviously been provided to Ann, and Ann, in turn, has provided extremely clear direction to myself, the other department heads in the room, along with a couple hundred of staff that we met with just a few weeks ago, which we'll touch on in a little bit more detail later on today. So that new direction from the Board to the CEO and the CEO to the rest of staff is what led us here today, and I really feel like we're on the precipice of a new day for Sacramento County, and I am extremely happy to be here. I'm very humbled to have the position that I do, helping to lead this process on behalf of the Board and the CEO. So before I jump into the presentation, I wanted to offer a little bit of my why, why I think this is important, and these are some of the same thoughts that I shared with staff, again, a couple weeks ago, when we met with about 200 folks that are involved in the development review process. And just a quick sneak preview, I'm going to be asking you for your why a little bit later on, so, you know, put that in the back of your mind for now. So, you know, my why, you know, it's both professional and personal for me. I've heard from the Board, and I truly believe that we are obviously facing a housing crisis, and I also believe we're facing a climate crisis, and I think that a process that facilitates the right kind of development is the right thing to do to address both of those crises. I think building in Sacramento County makes sense to address both of those crises, and it all starts with the process and how we interact with those customers that are doing the construction, right? The county does build some things, we build infrastructure, et cetera, but we have to partner with the development community to revitalize our existing communities and build new communities, so you'll hear a lot more about that as we move forward. You know, we're the urban core of the region, right? As Sacramento County goes, in my opinion, so goes the region. We have what it takes here to accommodate growth. We have transit. We have a huge job space, massive infrastructure investments already in the ground and coming. We have highly underutilized and sometimes blighted communities, commercial corridors that we talked about 15 years ago as part of the general plan update, that still are ripe for redevelopment. We have underutilized areas like the Jackson Highway Corridor that were formerly used for mining or still used for mining that I think are, again, ripe for the creation of new communities to help address these crises. I think building here makes sense from a jobs-housing point of view, a VMT and GHG reduction point of view, and an economic development point of view. And I think part of my why and part of my perspective is, you know, having worked in a couple other counties in this region and their approach to development and the large-scale plans that they're unfolding in their jurisdictions, I think we can do it better than anybody in this region. I am extremely confident of that. I want to build our community into a healthier place for my kids and, not jumping the gun too much because they're only 11, but, you know, maybe my grandkids in the future. That's really important to me, and offering them the same types of opportunities that I had, you know, early on in my college days and coming out of college, living in apartments, then moving into a very small funky place in midtown with my girlfriend and now wife, you know, then moving to what we affectionately called the armpit of East SAC by Folsom and 65th, which is now a very vibrant urban hub, and now, you know, in Arden Park and a bit bigger house, 2,000 square feet, raising my twins, with the hope, one day, if I can convince my wife to move back to an urban area, be that downtown or my dream is maybe into a new revitalized commercial corridor, where, again, as I did in East SAC, took transit to work for eight or nine years and could walk to everything, you know, my daily needs. So I love providing all of those opportunities for folks, because one of those products isn't right for, you know, necessarily a single person. We all have different needs over the course of our own lives, right? And that's certainly been the case for me, and I want to make sure that we're facilitating a process that effectively allows for the construction of all of those product types to meet the needs of individuals in the county. I think we have that opportunity here, and I think facilitating growth in commercial corridors, infill in our existing communities where it makes sense, and the creation of new communities where it makes sense, all of those tools are going to be necessary to meet the needs for population coming our way and just naturally growing within this region. That's what our general plan speaks to. I think it still holds true today, and we'll get into a little bit of that later on today. So, you know, my vision is really that this team, this 200-person team across multiple departments in the county, we are charged with building Sacramento, and we can't build Sacramento alone, but we are absolutely a key partner in doing so, and our partners are the private development community. We can't build without them, and they can't be successful without us, right? It might be a forced marriage to some degree, but I think that, you know, building those bridges, building relationships is going to go a tremendous way to delivering product to the market that we desperately need to meet the needs of our current and future Customer service, as Ann had mentioned, is absolutely key to getting there. You know, it's having a problem-solving mindset. It's the ability to embrace our role as facilitators and not just regulators, and I was actually talking about that earlier before the meeting started. We absolutely have federal and state regulations and local board-adopted codes that we have to implement, that we have to hold people accountable to, but our approach in doing so can differ, right? We can sort of embrace that regulatory role and approach it from that perspective, or we can embrace what I believe our role is, which is facilitators, helping our customers meet those challenges and navigating what is an ever-increasingly complex process in the state of California particularly to get things built and go vertical. It's just very tough, and, you know, my mantra to staff, and a lot of you and other staff have heard this already, is that's very important to me. I do want to hold folks accountable to things that they need to account for, but I want to do it in the most helpful way possible, and, again, sort of hold their hand through the process and help them get to success. And I really want us as staff as well to sort of embrace our leadership role and take over the mantle of the place to build in the region, and, again, I think it's the right thing to do for folks that are already here, future residents coming our way. I think it's the right thing for the environment, for the county, to be accommodating a good chunk of the growth coming to the region, and that was the entire premise of Sacog's blueprint from 2004, right? Grow more towards the urban core and reduce pressures on those outlying counties. I think we are the largest puzzle piece in that puzzle, and I want to embrace that leadership role from staff's perspective, and I think we absolutely need a renewed emphasis on infill development and commercial corridors in particular. I think that's a difficult nut to crack. A lot of it is due to, you know, aging infrastructure and insufficient infrastructure capacity in the ground, and that equates to a lot of money, but that is something, in my opinion, we absolutely need to be focusing on, but we can't accommodate the growth coming our way just with infill and those commercial corridors. We do need to look at building new communities as well where appropriate, and we've done a lot of good planning along those lines, and we continue to do so. The next challenge is going to be actually getting those new communities to start going vertical, and there are some very heavy infrastructure burdens that developers are going to have to overcome to do that, and, you know, I want us to be a partner in exploring solutions along those lines as well. The world doesn't just stop with planning, right? That's just step one of a multi-phase process to get things out of the ground, and that's really what I want to be focusing on as well. So that's sort of my why and my perspective. If there's any questions or comments or concerns about my perspective, I would certainly, you know, love to hear that. And then, when we get to recommendation number three in the report, I would love to hear from the Board your why, and that's going to help inform, I'll jump the gun a little bit here, a resolution that I would like to prepare and draft for him to bring back to the Board later this winter that sort of spells out your why, why this is important to you, what defines success relative to a better process improvement or process for development, et cetera. So sort of knowing your why will really help me formulate that draft resolution. But before I go any further, are there any questions, comments, concerns about what I just shared?
Board members, any thoughts? Pause here for a moment if there's some, I think, giving a very good overview of, you know, where we are and where you want to take us, Dave. Any thoughts at this point?
Okay.
Okay, none.
All right, so let's jump into report initiation and purpose. So the County Executive Office contracted with Mr. Carriage back in March of this year. I think most of you know who Mr. Carriage is. One of the realizations I had when talking to staff about Ray Carriage is I almost took it for granted that people knew who he was and then realized that, you know, some of our staff, you know, weren't even in elementary school when he was here as the city of Sacramento. And I can say that, having just been made fun of by numerous staff for being young myself, right? So, but, you know, Mr. Carriage has, I think, close to 50 years of experience in the development sphere, having worked in Portland, Oregon, and making quite a name for himself there as somebody who had a fantastic process in place for development-related services. He was recruited by the city of Sacramento quite heavily for a long time before actually moving down here to be the Assistant City Manager for the city of SAC and then ultimately becoming the City Manager for Sacramento. In that time, he made some tremendous strides towards customer service and polishing up their development-related processes. I was here at the county at the time. We actually tried to steal a number of his ideas and implement them here, and we'll talk about that as we go forward as well, but a lot of what he implemented at the city remains today, and I've been talking to my counterparts at the city that I've known for 20 years and have picked their brains quite a bit about what worked and stuck and what didn't, and that's going to help inform where we move forward in the future as well. So Ray, you know, comes with just a plethora of experience and I think delivered a good report for us to consider. So he was really charged with three things. One was reviewing and identifying the strengths and weaknesses of our development review system, providing recommendations to the CEO to enhance the efficacy and timeliness of the system and improve customer service, and then, third, preparing a report with his assessment and recommendations, and that's what you have in front of you today. We received that in mid to late September, and we sent it to the Board, we sent it to all the department heads and staff as well as the development community within about a day's time. So we've all had this in our hands just for a matter of weeks. This is very early on in the process, but I think this is just a great touch point with the Board right now, and I'm so happy to have the opportunity to be here on the very front end, and I know that's going to be a little awkward, so I'm going to have some questions for you about some of these recommendations, and I know we're so very early on that even staff ourselves haven't formulated solid options and recommendations regarding the report, and that's sort of our normal course of business when we approach the Board with items, but I think it's really, actually, a great opportunity to have this very early conversation to get your thoughts before launching into it. So very quickly on discussions to date, we met with the BIA a couple weeks ago. From that meeting came a letter that should be in your packets today with their initial thoughts. We actually, Todd Smith and Troy Givens and I are going out to the BIA in Roseville next week to have a follow-up conversation with them. There's been a number of individual conversations with customers, and then the big-ticket item is we held a very large kickoff meeting with staff on October 18th. So Ann and I hosted a meeting out at EMD with about 200 staff across multiple departments that are involved in some way in the development review process. It was scheduled from 3:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon, and, you know, going into these types of things, you know, our idea was to, again, sort of share our why, much the same format as today, talk about the report, what the report was intended to do, dispel some rumors about what it was not, you know, not intended to do, and, you know, going into those, you just never really know if, a group of 200 people, there's going to be, you know, a few brave souls that are willing to offer their thoughts in that kind of crowd with, you know, folks like Ann and me in the room, and, you know, I was wondering whether or not we would end in a half hour or, you know, the dam would break free and we could get a lot of comments, and frankly, it was much the latter, and that was a very pleasant surprise from my perspective. Staff was highly engaged, offered a lot of really good constructive comments, both very positive as well as critical, which is what I expected, and I loved the bravery of those few first folks that were able to speak up, and that really, I think, set the tone for the room that it was a comfortable place to share their thoughts. We went from 3:00 to 5:00. We got about halfway through what we wanted to get through. We formally broke at that point, and then we said, "Hey, anybody that wants to stick around, please feel free," and about a third of the room did, and we went till 6:30. We could have kept going, but I was frankly kind of hungry at that point, so we ended it formally at 6:30 and then stuck around for another half hour and had individual conversations. So I just share that with you because it was just so heartening to see how engaged staff were, how excited some of them were, as well as their bravery to share some constructive criticism in front of a large crowd, which I very much appreciated. You know, and I'll talk just a bit about sort of the main themes we heard. One, we heard from staff really three main things that we need to address immediately. One is we need more staff, and that's not because your Board hasn't provided enough positions. It's actually they have the positions they need, they're just having extreme difficulties in a lot of cases filling those positions, and that's not unique to Sacramento County, that's not unique to government, that's a challenge that everybody's facing across the United States. We also heard very much from them that they need more technical and cross-training, and one of the really interesting things that happened in the meeting was somebody in the audience asked, "How many people here use Acela?" And that's our sort of system of record, software system, and about half the hands went up, about 100 people. And they said, "How many people have been trained on Acela?" And it was literally five or six hands. So that, to me, was absolutely eye-opening and something that jumped right to the front of the list on my to-do list is to get people trained on this software. We have a lot of complaints, concerns, et cetera, about how the software is working and not, but most of our folks haven't even been formally trained on it, so I think getting that training rolled out immediately is a high priority for me. And then, third, what I heard a lot of is a passion from a number of our staff about customer service and frustration that they're not able to provide better customer service, and case in point was our website. I had one person from building say, "I get upwards of 50 calls a day from people asking extremely basic questions that could easily be found on our website if it were constructed in a manner that was easier to navigate." And I don't put that on DTAC whatsoever, and I actually said that during the meeting, that constructing the website is one thing. Keeping it up to date is all of our responsibilities, right? So I think that staff is very interested in doing so and revamping our website to make the tools and information that our customers need available more readily, and that'll cut down on a lot of workload, emails, phone calls coming in, so staff can focus on working on applications, et cetera. You know, some of the concerns that I heard, just to be very blunt and transparent, you know, we heard that Mr. Carriage didn't talk to a lot of staff that folks may have expected him to talk with. We also heard that he spoke to our customers, but not all the people we serve, and I think that's a very well-taken criticism, and we actually, at the front of the meeting, sort of defined the word "customer" as we're using it in this context. Mr. Carriage talked to our customers, meaning he talked to large developers, engineers that run projects through our process constantly, architects, you know, building industry association-type folks, so that the core customer base that does a lot of business with the county day in and day out. But we also serve a lot of, you know, we serve the general public. We serve to protect the environment. We serve ratepayers, right? And we serve a lot of mom and pops doing business with the county that he didn't talk to. So I thought that was a good criticism to receive upfront, and we sort of redefined how we talked about the word "customer" moving forward. There was also some level of criticism that the report didn't acknowledge as much as some thought it should, the good stuff we've already done, as well as some criticism that we've launched processes like this before and they haven't stuck, and I've been part of those in the past, and I think there's some lessons we've learned from those moving forward. So I very much appreciate staff providing that feedback to us. I really take that to heart, especially because it was offered in such a constructive way with an eye towards doing better, which I love to see. So next slide. So very quickly, just a note on recent challenges as well as successes over the last 12 months, so I don't need to belabor this too much. COVID, we all lived through it, we know the type of impact it had both to society and individuals, but there was some good that came out of it. You know, I remember personally grabbing my computer one day and going home, and we continued to do very good work, and we implemented- And we implemented new systems almost overnight to accommodate customers. We went to all online immediately, and a lot of those lessons learned and processes put in place, we're going to build on moving forward. It also showed that some amount of telework is very doable, both for staff, for our customers, as well as having it become something that our staff highly values. So I think that's some of the good that came out of our experience as well, and obviously a lot of bad. I mean, a lot of individual consequences, societal consequences, coupled with both workload and staffing vacancies that I think are, you know, at least in part, a result of the pandemic. You know, our workload, our metrics, our metrics right now are showing that workload has very much remained steady, if not grown significantly over the last couple of years. But coupled with those staffing vacancies and challenges filling those roles means that staff is the busiest I've ever seen. And I can say that, you know, very matter-of-factly. You know, we have right now, I think, 27% of our staff in planning is vacant, and that's not from lack of trying. We are constantly recruiting. We had a few months ago up to 40% of our survey staff vacant. And again, it's not for lack of trying. So these are struggles that we're still trying to address. DPS and Sylvester Fodall has been absolutely fantastic in helping us, and we'll get to that when we touch on some of these recommendations. But, you know, no matter how good of a process we have, these types of staffing vacancies are going to have an impact, they just are. And we do hope, you know, one good that may come out of a slowing economy is the ability to fill these positions, so I do remain hopeful there. And then recent successes, you know, I think I've mentioned many times to a number of folks in this room, I don't think that government in general is terribly good about telling our own story. I don't think we're that good, at least personally, I'm not that good at, you know, telling staff's story to the board. So what, you know, we have in the packet today is a compendium of things that staff has launched, either implemented or made significant progress on, in just the last 12 months. And a lot of these things don't look terribly flashy, some are bigger, some are smaller, but a lot of it's really meaningful stuff. And I'll just pick out a couple of quick things. You know, our new chief building official created on his own accord a very extensive work plan that they're already working on implementing right now, and that's going to make for tremendously positive changes moving forward. And, you know, we're happy to share that with you as well if you're interested. And, you know, little things like, you know, Todd Smith and I, Planning Director, were talking one day with an applicant about a draft SEQA document. And it was the case many years ago that, you know, we really didn't share admin draft SEQA documents with development, with our applicants, and that was always a point of frustration for them. We then migrated to sharing draft admin documents, but only in hard copy form, you have to come down to the county office to review them. And what was being asked of us was, well, can't you just provide it to us in an email? Sounds kind of obvious, right? You know, I think there is some level of risk, right, when sharing admin drafts that are obviously subject to change before being finalized, but it's really the developer's risk, right? If they, if the county gets sued, they're going to indemnify us and pay for the lawsuit. So we made a change immediately, right on the fly, and said, from this point forward, we're going to share admin documents, you know, digitally if requested. And I think that's a good change to make. I think it allows for a more comprehensive review and a better document moving forward. So, you know, I'm not going to belabor that document, but if you have any questions or comments, please let me know. So next slide. Okay, so this is where we get into the meat of what I hope to be a discussion. First, on the assessments, so I'll provide a really brief recap here. You know, obviously, there was, I believe, 12 major findings relative to the assessment. Some of them are due to technical issues, a lot of them are cultural issues that we, you know, talked about a little bit, you know, moving more towards a facilitation mindset with that sort of passionate focus on customer service. You know, people are hurting right now a bit. Our staff is challenged with an incredible workload, having just come out of the pandemic. They are very, very busy, and I do have a lot of empathy for what they're facing, and I do think that they are excited for change. I heard a lot of excitement for launching into a new era. So I think part of addressing the challenges in the assessment are folks like us on the seventh floor rebuilding a level of trust with staff. I think that's going to be incredibly important moving forward and something I've been heavily focused on, and building trust between staff and the development community. And that's a two-way street and something we've talked with the BIA about quite a bit, and they've been very gracious in offering, hey, you know, we're asking the county to do better, but we're willing to do better too. So, you know, Chris Norm has been great about offering, if there are things that the private sector can be doing better to facilitate a smoother process, they're all ears. So we're going to be offering some feedback to them as well as we move forward to address some of these concerns. So I wasn't going to focus too much on the assessment today. You know, I think it's very good to have the summary here as to our customers' view of the county and the services we offer. I think, you know, I've heard a lot of this already, so I can't say a lot of it was really surprising to me. I assume that, you know, many in this room have heard the same. Again, I think it's helpful feedback, but to me, the thing is really to only look backwards to the degree it helps inform where we want to go. And I'm really heavily focused on setting a vision for the future and pushing hard to get there. And again, to the degree that analyzing sort of where we have been helps us get to where we want to be, I think that's a healthy thing to do, but didn't want to belabor too much the assessment today. So I'm going to pause there and see, are there any questions, comments, things for discussion regarding the assessment before jumping into the recommendations?
Lot embodied in your presentation. Thank you, Davis. Let me go to board members. Any thoughts or comments you want to share? Yeah.
Just a quick comment. I mean, thanks, Dave. I know I'll have more to say, I know we all will, but I think the assessment was actually great. I think it really did a good job of encapsulating all of the concerns, you know, I hear in District 3, and I'm sure, I'm certain that's probably shared by the other supervisors as well. I think it captures it really well, captures the level of the complexity of the problems they face from every angle. So I appreciate you doing this, and I think it really highlights all the challenges we had ahead of us. So I just want to offer that initial comment. I'll have more to say, you know, when you're done with your presentation.
Okay. Anything else here?
I would just weigh in briefly, because I know you're going to want to kind of give and take here. As you noted, Dave, that in Mr. Carriage's report, he, you know, focused, obviously, as directed, related to the whole development review process from beginning to end, I guess. And one of the areas, and you mentioned it, was with the mom and pops. Again, you have industry representatives, you have folks who do production homes who certainly are skilled in, you know, advocating for changes and pointing out, you know, shortcomings and so forth. But I would just say that I think, you know, as you go forward, and you've already noted it, again, sometimes those are just, you know, one-offs, that, you know, folks come in to do a parcel map, or they come in to do an addition to their house. But I think, you know, how they're received, because we still encourage folks to do owner builders to participate in the, you know, in the construction program, assuming they can meet, you know, all the requirements that are in the codes that we administer. And I think same thing with some of the smaller, again, we see these scattered throughout the county, but I can tell you certainly in some of the more outlined portions of the county where you see parcel maps and, you know, it may require other special development permits because you have lots that, you know, have some oddities to them as relates to their, how they may have been created in the past and so forth. I think, you know, it was one thing to say, you know, here's the schedule, here's what it takes to, you know, to, you know, put the money on the table to process, but, and I know when we briefed, I commented on this, I think it's important, though, that people have, beyond just say, well, here's the paperwork, go to the website, that can be very helpful, people can do their own homework. I think it'll be just as important for folks, and we can talk about this later, about, you know, kind of the discretion that's utilized in process review and administering certain aspects of the zoning code or building code if that discretion's built in. But I think right up front, people need to have an understanding, and I gave you an example of one recently where folks have made the application, put down several tens of thousands of dollars, mom and pop, and now are finding out that there's a cultural resource survey, that there's a habitat conservation plan that may require hundreds of thousands of dollars in mitigation. That may have been bundled up and the information was given, but I think it's important from the get-go, and certainly, you know, all my colleagues have, maybe with exception of Supervisor Desmond, we'd already approved the plan, but the habitat conservation plan, it's a very important plan, it allows for development to occur both on the public and private side. And it was supposed to streamline, but I can tell you, there's been some small properties that have run up against this, and again, it's been very challenging, even to get a building permit, because of interpretations. And again, I would, you know, I know council's office has been involved in some of this as well, where, again, they've been stymied at the building permit process or looking at tens of thousands of dollars in mitigation fees that I don't think, when the board took the plan up, that we were going to make it difficult for somebody to put a house on a piece of property, as long as you didn't build it in the middle of Vernal Pool. So I would just point that out, I think, as a couple of examples, certainly could give specifics behind it, but I think that's important to keep in mind because, again, those are the folks that will, they only touch our process one time over the course of, you know, of engagement versus folks that are, you know, within the industry that are at our counters all the time. And so I would just offer that. And secondly, I guess, would just be that, it wasn't pointed out here, but it's a very important part, and this, our board has taken this up on several occasions over the years, the community review process, which is our planning advisory councils, and it's our citizen engagement as it relates to particularly planning and development proposals that fall within those categories. And I would hate to see that left out of the consideration. I know the clerk's office has, you know, done a tremendous job, certainly through COVID, but even prior to, in staffing our advisory councils, but in our unincorporated county, they are the voice that's closest to the people that we all represent when it comes to planning matters and other matters. And I still think, again, without, you know, bogging down any processes or making it inefficient as it relates to people that want to go forward with certain proposals, that's a key piece of it. And it, obviously, Mr. Carriage didn't address all, everything, but I would just, you know, keep that in mind because that, those are the citizen voices that help advise our board, the planning commission, our other review bodies, and I would want to make sure that their role is not diminished in the process, but certainly does not, you know, it doesn't also provide some sort of roadblock as it relates to considering things. But again, I can speak from experience on that, and so I would just offer those two thoughts as we're at this juncture in the presentation, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yeah, Phil.
Thanks. So first of all, thank you, Dave, for your preamble to this. I think you have already demonstrated being extremely thoughtful, and I'm glad that you're on our team. I'm looking at this, I think, a bit uniquely just because, you know, I've been trained as a planner before I was on the board. I had my own project management consulting business and worked on a few different very large master plans in the region. So I've been on the other side of the counter, so to speak, for many years. And one of the things I want to perhaps share and have folks think about as we continue to have this discussion is the currency of time. So, and by that I mean, looking for places where we can actually save time for applicants. And the way I kind of, I guess, look at it is similar to the flow of electrons. You have series and you have parallel, right? So one of the more frustrating things I can certainly remember, trying to process tentative maps or PUDs or even annexations, is having to confront staff oftentimes that were convinced that things had to happen step by step, and until you finished one step, you couldn't go on to the next step. And that was extremely frustrating, knowing full well that, while there's a lot of other things besides what we're currently focused on that could be happening in parallel, not in series, that would save a lot of time. And as we know, the cost of financing these projects is enormous, and the risk is, you know, it is their risk, but it is, it's a high-risk business that is really, you know, balanced on the fulcrum of time in my estimation. So I would hope that as we have, again, this discussion and we implement some of the recommendations, and I know we're not looking at doing it all at once, and I think that's really wise, but continuing to have focus on where time can be saved and we can be more efficient based on the fact that there are definitely different parts of the development review process and approval process that I believe firmly can and should be kind of separated and from the beginning. When you get an application, what, you know, if you were to do a flow chart, what needs to happen, when? And not think that it's just going to happen in series. I think there's just a lot of things that can and should happen concurrently that, you know, I think really built well for finding those efficiencies to make it much more customer-friendly.
Very good. Thanks, Phil. Sue?
Dave, I want to thank you and Ann, and in particular for, actually, this is something, this topic has been something that we've been talking about since I was elected in 2017, and you have taken it to, you've activated a response to actually a meaningful change. And so I want to thank you for your leadership on that. I have a feeling we'll have time to talk, but I just wanted to tag on to something Supervisor Natoli said about community review process and the importance of the public feeling a part of that conversation, having the ability to give their input without delaying the project. And I also want to add to that the fact that we have, we'll be moving into updating our general plan if we haven't already. And we have a lot of specific plans that are very old and that some communities seem to feel very proud and have taken ownership of those local plans in their community. One community in specific is Orange Vale, where they are looking at their specific plan that was written, I don't even know when, back in the '60s or '70s. Supervisor Natoli knows.
But they're all very dated, they're getting close to 50 years old, I can tell you.
Yeah, but the challenge is that the general plan's been updated over time, and it has overlapped and changed what that's going to look like. And so what the community is thinking and what our staff need to go by are two different things, and so there's a disconnect. And that makes it really hard for development community to come in and have that conversation about what can happen in that community, because there's a complete disconnect between what the community thinks is supposed to happen there and what the developer knows it could happen based on the general plan. And so I'm just wondering if you can look at that, because it would make it, I don't know, I know, I've had this conversation in the past with others, predecessors of yours, and they have stated there's not enough money to update all those specific plans, and I understand that, but if there's a way to have a public, I don't know how to fix it. I'm asking you if you can put your heads together and think about how we can narrow the delta between what the public perceives and what we know.
Yeah, I've, having managed the general plan update for most of its tenure, the last go-around, I have a lot of lessons learned from that process, and I think that is one thing that we would need to address with the general plan update moving forward, and we could spend a whole nother session on that for sure, and frankly, probably will if and when we get to that point. But your point's very well taken and something we actually discussed quite a bit during the last go-around in the general plan update. So yes, I made a note of that, and that'll be a discussion moving forward.
Yeah, I would just piggyback on that, because those community plans are very dated. They're 40, 45 years, getting close to 50 years in vintage, and I think a lot of cases, you know, reflected certainly the planning and vision at the time, and it's no small undertaking to redo a community plan, but they are integral in a lot of the commentary and the verbiage that goes into the general plan. And your zoning is based upon those community plans, we did specific plans more recently, but, and, you know, how you would update those, again, you know, through the community processes that we're talking about, certainly would, you know, require a lot of effort. But, you know, I've jokingly said in the past that in some cases, they're more fiction than they are fact, because, you know, things have changed, either through rezonings, through other layers of state and federal guidance that we've received and then integrated into general plan updates. And so I think it would be incumbent, and as you've talked about infill, but certainly other strategies to, you know, facilitate, you know, smart development. other strategies to, you know, facilitate, you know, smart development, those community plans are going to be a strong consideration, because people can look to them and say, this is what the county said, you know, Board of Supervisors in 1978 or '79 approved this. That's what stands, you know. No matter what your general plan says, and certainly what your zoning reflects, and I'm sure, as Supervisor Frost said, it can be a frustration for, you know, those who may seek to do something else, but, again, you've noted it, but I would just say that's probably an area, you're not going to do it all in one year or two years, though. You look at those, you know, you have a, probably what, almost a, probably eight or 10 community plans?
Oh, yeah.
Or 12?
Yeah, more than that.
Yeah.
And then, the last one we did, well, last one, when I was here, we did, I think it was Arden Arcade at the time, and that was a multi-year process. A lot of community engagement.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good comments. And any other, Patrick or Mitch? Just one other comment before you move on, is that I appreciate the listing of things that have been accomplished, some of the, you know, things that we've done to, you know, facilitate efficiencies, but also to streamline and be more customer-friendly. I would just note that a couple of things in that, and I don't know, you said you weren't going to cover that in detail, but I just wanted to note that, as related to the automated permit issuance, and it goes back not just to COVID, but even prior to that, and I think the fact that we've done that with, you know, water heaters and roof, re-roofs and electrical panels, and now that we talk about, you know, energy changeouts and so forth, those electrical panels are key. We've also intentionally, this board has, has kept those fees, you know, below the $100 threshold intentionally, where, you know, your surveys would show that they cost X amount of hundreds of dollars to process, because we want to encourage folks to get those permits, and contractors may be doing that work for folks, but we also want to make it as simple and as easy as possible from, you know, from a standpoint of health and safety. And so, you've talked about in your summation here that you may be looking at other permit areas, and I think that that's wise to do that. The other thing I would just note, too, and again, I've had, you know, chance on a couple of occasions, talked with our, you know, new chief building inspector, Mr. Mahoney, and I think the ordinance to update the violations program, I know we've talked about that at the board over the course of, over the years, and to, you know, be more compliant-focused versus punitive, and I know there's a number of things that are in the works, we'll probably see them next Tuesday on some of the updates with the building code adoption and so forth, but I would just say, I think that that, hopefully, we send that message to folks that, you know, yeah, if you either unintentionally or intentionally decide to do something without permits, that idea is to get compliance, to make sure that it's, you know, it meets code, but not to just hammer folks. And there are examples, and I won't rail on this morning, where we got into tens, if not, you know, 50, 60, 70,000 dollars in paper violation, administrative violation sums of, and it just made it impossible. People just weren't going to, you know, they'd just walk away. They either let their property go, they step away, and, you know, and that resounds, just as you've talked about some examples in the report about where county staff felt unsupported, that gets around the community, too, that, you know, you know, they took the liberty of doing something, or maybe a previous property owner, and now they've got 60, or 70, or 80,000 dollars in violations. A lot of that's just paper, because they didn't miss these deadlines. You're not going to get compliance. And so, I think the approach here, to your point, to the point of your report, I think the approach here ought to be one where we do get compliance, but let's look at the realities of what we're trying to do here, and not trying to, you know, pummel people into bankruptcy, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sure.
Just one other suggestion, Dave. Once it's concluded, you know, how much you want to do immediately from the recommendations, understanding it's going to be a multi-year effort to do it all, is I would encourage you, us, to communicate very clearly, especially to the Federal Fish and Wildlife Service, what our intentions are and how we're trying to improve efficiencies. I think, as you're well aware, we can have the most efficient process in the world, but if we don't have kind of a common understanding or partnership, especially with fish and wildlife, that projects can be held up kind of at the 11th hour. Case in point, the Greenbrier project now in Northlake that I worked on was really held up for about eight years, primarily based on a dispute about how wide a habitat corridor should be on the west side of that plan. And, you know, once that was figured out, that, you know, that was kind of the last hurdle, and the project started coming out of the ground. But I think it's, I think it's key that the Fish and Wildlife Service in particular, Army Corps of Engineers as well, understands that it's not just the applicant that, you know, is coming to them for approval and to be regulated and all that, it's the fact that they should understand we're in partnership with the development community to, you know, to try to achieve especially the objective of providing more housing in the community.
Good point. Just one last point, I was, I wanted just to follow on what Phil was talking, kind of in larger context, I think in the more focused context, certainly, as I was noting, I think, looking for compliance, community compliance, but as we're looking at accessory dwelling units, and I can tell you, there's proliferation, certainly in a lot of the rural areas of the county, and we're starting to see it, obviously, in the suburban setting as well. I think, you know, how we administer that, how we inform folks, but also how that fits, you know, with, and we've had, you know, obviously, state laws intervened on that, but I do think that building permit inspections, as along with planning, have done a good job trying to help us sort through that, and I think even with accessory structures and so forth, and I think we're going to find more compliance, but also hopefully some more housing, and again, a kind of a onesie-twosie basis versus, obviously, developments that are, you know, long-range, that will have many hundreds, if not thousands, of homes, and trying to get through those processes that can take years. So, again, just kudos to our staff for their work, and I know our board has had a couple of touchpoints on some of that, as state law has changed in that regard, so. Okay. Any other comments? All right.
Okay. All right, well, let's jump into the recommendations, then, if we can. Again, you know, I would encourage an open discussion. I know it's early on in the process, and we're all sort of digesting this together, but this is very meaningful and helpful for staff to hear early on, sort of the board's objectives and thoughts on some of the recommendations. So, we'll focus on the first tier recommendations, to the extent we have time, which, what time are we shooting to end this presentation? Noon? Okay. If we have time, we can jump into some of the second-tier recommendations as well. I didn't intend to go through the specialty programs in the back in any detail. Those are offered as ideas to implement in the future, once we've addressed the other recommendations, but if there's a desire to talk about that, we certainly can. And, you know, this is going to be an iterative discussion with the board. This is not a one-and-done. You know, I definitely expect that we will be back to the board many times over the next few years, so this will not be your only chance to provide input. This is just the first of many, as I see it. And to that end, really, just one disclaimer, you know, we've only had this for a few weeks, you know, so I'll be asking some questions as we go through each of the recommendations. If you don't have input at this point in time, that's fine. To the extent you do, that's very helpful, but again, just knowing that this is all very fresh in our minds, I don't expect to have everybody to have fully-fledged thoughts on every one of the recommendations. So, with that, what I'd like to do is go through the first tier recommendations, one by one. I'll offer a couple of comments for each and see, I might have specific questions for the board, or if you just have general thoughts, that would be helpful as well. So, any questions about the format before moving forward?
Any questions? And I think certainly to facilitate commentary, just jump in. I mean, I don't need to recognize the chair here, so colleagues and as well as staff. If we're going to have kind of this free-flow discussion to respond to Dave, and you're certainly going to go through this on a numerical basis, but let's just kind of have that conversation, so.
Right. And some of them are sort of rudimentary, so I'll spend a little bit more time on some and might gloss over others. So, the first one, you know, speaks to eliminating our current backlog of work, filling vacancies, expanding the pool of pre-approved plan review contractors, and creating overtime opportunities. You know, I think filling current vacancies, you know, painfully obvious, we absolutely want to do that and are trying very hard. You know, I talked about some of the vacancy rates that we're seeing right now, and, you know, we're working really well with DPS to try to fill some of those positions. You know, they've helped on their end by making changes to their own processes, bringing on additional vendors to do medical testing, to bring staff on board earlier. That might sound like a simple thing, but that's actually really important, because oftentimes, we're offering jobs to people, they'll accept, and then a week later decline because they have another better opportunity. So, getting people in the system quickly is imperative, and DPS has been a great partner on that front. They've also done hiring fairs for a number of different county functions. We're exploring that as well. That's been highly successful with waste management in particular. And we'll touch on some more specific issues around minimum qualifications for job classes when we get to recommendation number six. But any sort of thoughts in general, or ideas for how to tap into talent that might be out there? I've heard from the board in the past that what I used to do personally, and a lot of folks in the county, is reach out to our local colleges. I recall, you know, on an annual basis, presenting to UC Davis, as well as Sac State, to, you know, people that are going to be graduating in the coming months, and try to tap that talent. And that's something I'd love to get back going as well. Are there other ideas that you don't think we're exploring right now that we could be?
I guess, one that's kind of, and as all the other board members have said, I've got lots more to say, but I figure I'll give you an opportunity to put it out on the table. You know, there's one area that I continuously hear from applicants, where we seem to be an outlier, and that's our environmental review process, in that, you know, we do everything in-house, and most jurisdictions actually contract out, and it seems to be, you know, really onerous, and it really slows the process, so I'd like to hear you address that at some point.
Yeah, we can actually touch on that now. You know, the second part of this recommendation is expanding the pool of contractors, and we've actually done quite a bit of that, a lot of that, actually, over the last nine months, in part because it makes sense, but also in part just to backfill the lack of staff that we have to do the work right now. So, with building in particular, we have six brand-new contracts as of this summer that we can tap into for plan check and inspections. Surveys has four new contracts. Water Resources has a new contract for water supply, and we're working right now on establishing new contracts for SEQA work. So, right now, I believe as of this year, we had two contracts. They've since expired. We're working on four contracts, so again, we can kind of dish out the work as it makes sense. But Sacramento County has historically been an outlier. Many years ago, we had a separate Department of Environmental Review and Assessment that I think many of you know about, and we did everything in-house, everything. That's changed over time. We do farm out some of that work now, but we do it in a way a little bit different than other jurisdictions. Some jurisdictions will allow an applicant to contract directly with their own consultant, prepare a SEQA document, and submit it to the county. I'm not a huge fan of that, personally. What I've seen work really well is when we are going to contract out, three-party agreements are something other counties do as well, where it's the applicant contractor, as well as the county, entering into a contract, and that facilitates good discussion amongst all of those parties, which I think is essential to creating good defensible documents. Now, right now, I think it's a contract between the county and the consultant. Historically, there may have been, you know, some firewall between the consultant and the applicant. To me, that doesn't make a lot of sense. I think we should be facilitating discussion. Again, I mean, it's the applicant that has most of the information that the consultant needs to do the work, right? And, you know, filtering everything through the county doesn't always make sense. Obviously, we want to be part of those communications. But I think that, you know, having good, defensible SEQA documents is paramount, right? It makes all the sense in the world, from our perspective, as well as from the applicant's perspective. And I do think that it makes sense sometime to do it in-house with our own staff, but there are absolutely times that we should be tapping external resources. Extremely complicated DIRs are tough for any one staff or small team of staff to do on their own. You just need so much expertise brought to the table, and that oftentimes lends itself to staff collaborating with an external contractor to get those done. But it is a collaboration, no matter what, between those three parties that we talked about, at least in my mind, it should be.
Dave?
Yes, sir.
So, relative to that, to the history of doing SEQA work in-house, how much of that, and maybe Don has the answer here, but how much of that is, if any, is an artifact of 71J?
Ooh, good question. So, you know, when I was here before, and I think, you know, Troy could probably speak to this better than I am, you know, but planning was in one room. There was literally a wall and one door, and then on the other side of that wall was DIRA. And that, there was definitely a culture that separated those two functions, right? And I think we've made a lot of progress integrating those two functions. To the extent that 71J led to the culture where those two functions were separated, I'm not quite sure, but we do have a history here of doing those documents in-house to a large degree. And we have, you know, evolved a bit since then, but still aren't approaching it the way that many other jurisdictions around us are.
Well, that's kind of why I asked the question, because what other jurisdictions have that particular clause in effect?
Right. I know of none personally.
Right.
I do know, I have recently worked for another jurisdiction that frankly has the exact opposite approach, where it's push everything to the private sector, and until you demonstrate that you've done so, to the extent possible, only then can you ask for staff. And that's, it's just a very different culture.
You know, just to the question, I think, again, having started here in the late 70s, and of course, SEQA coming into effect in, what, '72, '73, I think some of it evolved from a very strong environmental coordinator at the time. 71J, I think, contributes to that, but that was a, you know, more recent iteration. And, you know, as Dave just accurately described, there was, you know, there was a firewall, and, you know, and of course, it wasn't just private sector, it was county projects, too. They all had to be vetted through that very same process. And then, and I think to your point earlier, Phil, it was sequential. There wasn't any other work that went on, and again, it may have been project, you know, relative project specifics, but it was, that had all, all those boxes had to be checked before you could go, you know, do anything that might be parallel, and I think, so I think we have evolved. I would just say, too, that I think the more hybrid approach, which this board has supported over time, I think works pretty well, and we've, you know, certainly kept, you know, under the county's umbrella, which I think is really important, because again, ultimately, it's going to be the board supervisors, or an agency or a department is going to have to, you know, sign on that document. And I can tell you that just recent experience has shown me, in the case where Dave used the example, where some jurisdictions allow just applicant, you'll get your own environmental consultant, you do the work, you submit it to us, and then we look at it. I can tell you that's resulted in some hiccups with, you know, adjoining neighbors, adjoining property owners, because basically, the applicant took it and ran, they said there was no, you know, nothing that couldn't be mitigated. Well, that's being disputed, and now the jurisdiction's in the middle of that discussion, and it kind of goes between what's a mitigated negative declaration versus a NEDDEC versus, you know, some other environmental documents. So, I think what we've kind of worked towards, and probably have some ability to do some more, so that we build in some more efficiencies, and, but I would caution going to, and that wasn't being suggested here, that we just give it to the applicant, you'll get your own consultants, and then bring the work to us when you're all, when you think it's done, because I think that could result in more delays, but also, I think, maybe a less defensible document at the end of the day, that we or somebody in this organization's going to have to approve, so. Other thoughts? Patrick?
I just want to comment on 71J. You know, years and years ago, 10, 15, 20 years ago, I used to be a big complainer about 71J. And 71J really becomes a difficulty, really only if we're in an economic downturn, where we are facing the possibility of laying off staff. It really, it's a bit of a hurdle when you are contracting out work that staff does, but, you know, as long as you complete the economy and efficiencies, you know, analysis, it doesn't prohibit us from contracting out. It only prohibits us from using those contractors if we're in a position, they have to go first if we're in a downturn.
And environmental work, preparing SEQA documents, you know, has gotten so much more complicated over the years. Having the full complement of in-house staff necessary to prepare those documents is, it often doesn't make sense, right? You need such unique and specialized professions that all contribute to those documents, so having consultants help fill those roles makes a lot of sense. So, point well taken.
Can I interject on that, too?
Sure.
So, to be your point, Dave, there is a government code section, as you know probably, that allows the county to contract for specialized services without having to consider the 71J aspect, so.
Yes.
As we move forward in changing and moving things more towards streamlining and requiring more outside services, in addition to county services, we can certainly help you look into that as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa. Your thoughts? Just looking around the table here. Okay, keep.
And the last part of that recommendation is just creating overtime opportunities. Given the vacancies and the resultant salary savings, you know, there is money there for staff that is not salary, that's paid hourly, that wants to work overtime, and, you know, I've told all the department heads that I work with to feel free to authorize And, you know, I've told all the department heads that I work with to feel free to authorize overtime to the extent people are willing to take that up. So that's really it for the first recommendation. The second recommendation is schedule a kickoff meeting, and we talked about that earlier. That was something we were going to do anyway, but it was great to see that Mr. Carriage thought that was important as well. The third, now this one, I did want to spend a few minutes on, this one's really important to me. And having managed many projects over many years, I've had to learn this lesson the hard way more than once, where it's so important, in my opinion, to set expectations clearly upfront and to know what success means. So two, three years from now, looking backwards, we know if we hit the mark or not. And this recommendation really resonates with me on that level, where the report is calling for a resolution to be adopted by the board that basically both affirms your support for this initiative, which I think is clear is certainly the case, but then also, you know, in my opinion, sort of sets that expectation. And this is where I'm going to ask you about your why. So why is this important to you? What do you want to achieve via this process? And how would you define success? And I would love to hear as much thought as you have around that, because my charge will be to distill some of those comments and the rest of what I'm hearing today into a draft resolution that I want to bring back to you in the next couple of months for your consideration and hopeful adoption. And that sort of sets our North Star moving forward from a policy perspective. Everything we do implementing process improvement initiatives should be consistent with that resolution.
So I think the resolution idea is a great one, because it not only kind of makes the expectation clear for community development, but also for the public. One of the things I think needs to be glaringly obvious in the resolution that somewhere in one of the wheres or the resolve is the connection to the board's interest, great interest in housing production. And the fact that we, I think, you know, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I'm just kind of borrowing from comments I've heard in the past from all of us, is that, you know, we're in a housing crisis, we're in an affordability crisis. I think there's no debate that a lot of it has to do with supply and demand. So, you know, I don't know at this point what that verbiage would be or look like, but I think the housing part of it needs to be front and center.
I completely agree. I think that's a great part of the why. I think another part of the why could be, I mean, for me, anyway, it's looking at the built-out suburban community and some of these older unincorporated communities, and they are an inherent challenge to get not only housing development, but just general economic investment, business investment. So we have to put these measures in place. Number one, the board established that this is a priority, but put these measures in place to, I think, kind of counteract the instinct to go look elsewhere, to other surrounding communities, to invest and to build. So that just makes it that much more important. Unless we have better processes, culture, structures in place, we're never going to be able to compete with, you know, the Rosevilles or these other outlying areas. So that, to me, that's another part of the why, is that we have some inherent challenges in our older unincorporated areas. And inherent challenges based on some of the things that are outlined in the assessment. You know, these unincorporated communities have a much different review process, a much different involvement by, from special districts, right? So we have to counter that with our own internal, making our own internal processes better. And something that I think is important for the resolution and which I fully support, because I think everything flows from the resolution, right? And the board, you know, implements these resolutions to reflect our priorities, is, you know, the customers aren't just the developers in my, just in the way I look at it. The customers are also, you know, everybody else in the community. Because this investment, whether it's an infill housing project or a business relocating in the unincorporated county, it's the other members of the community that are contributing that as well. So I want to make sure we don't lose sight that our customers are not just the applicants. You know, it's a much, in my opinion, it's a much larger.
I would even say that the customers, the customers aren't just human beings, right? Could be special status species, could be air quality, could be water quality.
Yeah, good point.
So I think there's a lot of environmental attributes that need to be acknowledged.
Yeah. Patrick?
Thank you. Couple of things. One is, you know, we hear all the time from, and Supervisor Serna and I have been on the same side of the table before we did this, and, you know, you'll hear a lot about the value of predictability, and that's missing in current processes, I think, a lot of the time. Another one is regarding housing. We all know we're not meeting our RENA goals, and I think that we almost need to look at our housing, kind of like we're, you know, we should be looking at the homeless issues and, you know, as with the level of urgency. And I'll give you an example. There's a developer in District Two who, you know, was set to build a big-box retail building. That's not going to ever happen again, most likely. I mean, big-box retail's going away. Birkenmorder retail's going away eventually, and already you can't build it. Well, so he wants to build housing. Well, I mean, this is a great opportunity for the county, but we treat it just like it's any, like it was a housing development proposed 20 years ago. We don't treat it with the level of urgency that we have a crisis in housing, and that's a problem. And I guess one of the other things that, you know, and this couldn't be encapsulated necessarily, but as is, but I'm going to say it, as, you know, whereas, that we acknowledge that the county is a partner in the development process. Yeah, I read a document once in which a past study was done in which staff actually said, it was a quote that, and you've heard me say this before, Dave, that it's our job to protect the county from developers. And that's a cultural problem, that somehow we have to get over that. It's not county staff's job to protect the county from developers. It's the staff's job to try to make a project as beneficial to the community as possible, but not to protect. It's that mindset that I think slows everything down and creates that adversarial relationship between what should be our development partners.
One of the things that is important to me is economic vitality, and it begins with, you know, having the ability to actually pull a project together and pencil it. And the big challenge, it seems, I'm not a planner, but it seems like there's a challenge, and it's so complex. It's the water, you know, we're in a moving, you know, we're in a drought, and so we're relooking at, you know, water plans and the roads and the finance plan. And we're trying to figure out how we can help developers who are trying to make something happen at market value, and they really can't, it's difficult to do that, because they're having to build homes that are much more expensive in, just in order to make money on the project. And so on the other side of that, there's a, on the customer service side of it, there's so many changes, logistic and legal and regulatory changes that are constantly coming down. And so the idea of cross-training and educating staff so that they're all on the same page, going in the same direction, so that when someone comes up to the counter and talks to one person, three weeks later and they talk to another person, they get a different response, because they weren't on the same page. And so I think somehow in the resolution, if we can find a way to, and in our, you know, in our commitment to our team, our staff, because I'm learning, and my chief of staff, we go through this. I'll bring a problem from the community, and I'll say, well, they're having so many problems, and he'll go look into it, and he'll say, Sue, you know, that the plan doesn't say what the person thinks the plan says. You know, it's, it's not, there's another side to the story, and the staff have explained it to me. The county didn't do anything wrong. And so I know there's two sides to the story, but there's also that little trust, trust in your leadership, that they will allow you to, they will empower you to make decisions and to make mistakes and stand behind you if you make a mistake and take the hit with you. And not, not, maybe not, I'm not saying, I'm not quite sure what, how to say this, but I think we need to empower our team in that way, because then people will want to come work for the county, because they know they can fly and they can be all that, they can be all they can be. And then we need to spend extra money or whatever it takes to get, to educate them so they know it better than anyone, and they're all on the same page, going in the same direction. And if we can get behind our team in that way, we might better be able to think outside the box and figure out how we can pull all those details together. I don't know if I said anything that, I hope I articulated that in a way that, I think in the resolution, we should make a commitment to empower our team to make decisions. And then, you know, if it's not working out, we need to do a better job educating. And I know that's a huge, huge lift, because the rules keep changing frequently, so.
Supervisor Natale?
Yeah, sure.
I really appreciate that Supervisor Frost, because Dave and I have already been trying to message to all the team that we really do want to empower them to make decisions and take calculated risks, because, you know, when they do make decisions, there are sometimes risks involved. There is a lingering culture of fear of staff to make those decisions, and so that's going to take a little bit of time. But Dave and I and the affected department heads, we've all been talking about how important that is to really allow staff to make decisions so they can be experts, and that is something that we will continue to reinforce. And that we will support them when they do make a mistake, because people do make mistakes, and we do need to stand behind them and support them and help them learn from it.
Yeah, I think Phil did, Sue.
And then after that, I hope, oh, did you?
Well, if you were still in your commentary.
This is real quick. Just then after that, when they do something great, make them the star of the year, or the day, or the month, or whatever.
Good point. Yeah, Phil.
Dave, as we discussed when we had our briefing on this, it sounded to me, through your explanation of many of the changes you want to see and that Ann wants to see happen is treating applications, and maybe it's a certain application of a certain size that would garner this type of treatment or response from the county side, but having a better kind of case management, project management structure, I think is a really good idea. Right now, to tell you the truth, it feels like Todd, the Todd and Chris Show only when it comes to projects, and that's not, I don't think that's very sustainable, especially for the larger, more complicated projects. And I think we all have those in our respective districts. But I think recognizing in the resolution the shift to have more leadership presence, presence, I guess, on a project-level basis, so that to Supervisor Frost's point, the applicant project manager knows who the point of contact is, can talk one-on-one with the same person throughout the life of the application process or the approval process. And I think that sends a great message to the development community that we're taking seriously the fact that you want to have consistency in what you're being told or, you know, what you're, what you think you have agreement on with the county at any given point during the approval process. So I think that should be probably one of the wheres as well.
Okay. Rich and then Patrick.
Sorry. So, thank you. Agree with, just a couple more thoughts. I agree with everything, of course, that my colleagues are saying. I mean, I think when it comes to, you know, obviously setting, what is the objective of this resolution? You know, clearly to accomplish all these things that we're talking here today, but not only in terms of the improving the process culture, structure, so applicants have a, you know, so they're, so we're more efficient in terms of time, we're more consistent, they have clear expectations, all of that stuff, but also make sure we throw in just, I think in light of what you've heard here today, that this resolution, this process is also in furtherance of other goals and priorities of this board in terms of housing, more housing development, environmental protection, economic development. I mean, I think that would be important to lay it out, why we're doing this, to kind of belabor what I mentioned with the customers, make sure that people understand this is not just for big developers. This is for normally all the customers and even the, even the, you know, the, you know, more the, I guess, system-type partners or objective-type partners that Phil mentioned, but also make sure it's clear that this is big developers, small infill developers, a resident who may just want to do a lot split, a small business owner. I mean, make sure people know that this is, this is meant to, you know, address everybody. And then something I didn't know if you had thought about in terms of this resolution, but, you know, we have a discussion a lot of times about geographically targeting, you know, certain areas in the county. You know, primarily environmental justice zones, that we have, what I think, three in the unincorporated county. You know, should we make a mention about the importance of also not just changing the process structure and all those other things, but also the county prioritizing investments in the EJ communities in the unincorporated county? I don't know if that's something that's, you know, beyond the scope of this resolution, but I think that's important to take note, that that's a priority of ours as well.
Yeah, I think that's, to the degree that that's a desired outcome from a more efficient process, right?
It certainly is for me. Yeah, absolutely. I mean.
Thanks, Rich.
Yeah, thank you for that Supervisor Desmond. That's a great point. I know you didn't want to get too much into the specialty permit program, but, you know, one of them that is mentioned in here that, you know, one of, well, I'll give another, you know, case study example, and that's that we have a multi-family affordable housing project to create 194 units of affordable housing down on Power and Road. But to do that, they had to get a whole lot of federal money and all of that. So when I say time is money, I'm not saying that in the sense that my job as a county supervisor is to make as much profit for developers as possible, but my job is to facilitate the good projects get done. And time often is money, and therefore, you know, the longer we delay the process, the more expensive a project gets, it no longer pencils out. We lost an opportunity. And that's what I'm talking about, time is money. I think one of the things on that particular project, for example, they came in, they went through plan check and review and all of that, they got their comments back, they responded, then they got more comments back, they responded, then they got more comments back, they responded. Literally, that's three times that each time they would get different comments. And I think that that's where that multidisciplinary team approach that is outlined in the section that you didn't want to get into, I think could be, you know, very valuable at, because, I mean, you know, if DWR is over there and they don't see it at the first time, and then the second time they do, and I'm not picking on DWR as just an example, because he's sitting over there and looking at him.
Could be DOT, right?
But yeah, it could be DOT, exactly. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's usually not Siobhan, okay? But, but, you know, I think that multidisciplinary team, and I watched Ray do this when he was at the city, when I was on the planning commission, and it just is something that I think is, I feel very strongly about.
I would just echo a number of the comments here and thank my colleagues, because again, I think that resolution needs to embody, you know, the direction we want to move towards and how we would wish to see that implemented. I would just say that to Ann's comments, too, and maybe it touches on number four, but I think certainly convey in the resolution that, you know, we seek to be problem solvers and not problem creators, and that in doing so, we, you know, we're going to encourage folks, certainly with, I think, as several have said here, you know, folks to utilize within reason, their discretion, and hopefully be innovative and creative. I mean, those words are kind of key words, but I think that's what you want to encourage at all levels. And again, not, not to be taking adverse risk, but there is some risk. If you, you know, if, you know, you're just taking some taking something from a code section that the board approved 30 years ago and that's just, you know, that's the Bible you're, you're, you're taking it from and there's no ability. But I, you know, my experience would tell me that there is flexibility in many cases to look at ways, not to get around things, but to certain, how we apply them. And I think that's going to be important to convey, recognizing that we're still going to be dealing with, you know, different binaries of documentation and different sets of regulations for both state and federal as well as local. I would also, I guess, encourage, and it sounds like we're going to bring this in the winter, I won't be here when the resolution gets before the board. So, but that, we've talked about it and I think certainly expressing that, you know, this is a quality of life issue, not just efficiency and processes, but, you know, whether it's housing or it's, you know, parks or streets and, you know, livable communities and that, you know, if we're going to encourage, you know, certainly a, a logical build-out as relates to general plans and so forth, but also then accommodate, you know, new creation of, of jobs, you know, conversion of some of the commercial, older commercial areas potentially over time, you know, you know, working on something that's been in the works as we sit here today. When you look at, you know, our, our former military bases in Mather, and again, you know, economic development's had a, you know, big hand in all of that. I just think it's really important to talk about the quality of life and what we aspire to, as you've said, Dave. And I guess one key thing that might not be addressed specifically in the resolution, but again, a couple of my colleagues have mentioned it. I think the economic development, but the investment and reinvestment piece of this, I think the county is going to be a key, have to be a key player because, and I'll just use the Fulton Avenue example many years ago and certainly our former colleague Supervisor Muriel Johnson and her efforts working with the partnership out there, working with County Department of Transportation, with the Metropolitan Fire District, with the water purveyor in that area. You know, one of the things that wasn't known, when we got, kind of got into that and trying to, you know, basically encourage, you know, at that time, a lot of, you know, commercial investment, but certainly to recognize there were, you know, neighborhoods adjacent to, to that area, in Arden Arcade area, that that water line was insufficient, you know, for fire flow. And it was a big hindrance, but it was a $3 million price tag and nobody had the money. Was it more than that, Troy? You worked on it?
Yeah.
Okay. So it was more than $3 million. But again, trying to identify how that was going to be paid for, but the fire code regulations required and so forth. And so I think, you know, one of the things that would be considered going forward, and I don't know, again, it might be very innovative, but, you know, the county might look to bond to have, have funding available so that when we have good, smart growth and we want, we look at our EJ communities, but also our commercial corridors and, and projects that will bring new housing and so forth, if that's a hindrance, recognize we've got partners, we don't control all of the, the fastest, not just like a city where they do, you know, water, you know, fire and police and so forth. I think that that might be something we want to consider because otherwise we kind of do it piecemeal. We, you know, we, we're creative in the sense that we put together P bids and we, you know, work with SMUD and we work with our, you know, you know, partner nonprofits, I mean, nonprofits are, are public sector partners in water and, and certainly with the sanitation districts. I think it's going to require, you know, the ability to package, assuming you can get the permits, but then the opposite becomes, how do you draw down those sources of money? And I think there's some real, real opportunity, I guess, as Lassie would say, that, you know, with the, the MFR money that's coming down from, you know, you know, federal legislation, particularly as relates to water and, and sewer and certainly Wi-Fi, you know, looking at how we might draw on those, but it might require a local pool of dollars to, to match that. And again, it's not to benefit the developer, but it's, if that's the barrier and, you know, you got a great project, everybody agrees, but, you know, we can't afford to make the fire flow portion of this because it's going to be, you know, north of, you know, $3 million, then that becomes a real obstacle. And it, and it also holds back then some of the smaller developments that could certainly help begin to, I think, spread that infill and, and see the desirability and getting back to the quality of life. And lastly, I would just say that some of our partners, certainly the, the park districts and school districts have older infrastructure as well, and they have their own fee structures. But, you know, if you're trying to, you know, work with your partners, some of those things are key because people, when they look to put a home or a business, you know, they look around, they, they look at the infrastructure, certainly the built environment, but some of those, you know, districts, you know, again, we don't control them and so we don't control the fee structure, but they're our partners in the quality of education, the, you know, the, the facilities themselves, certainly the parks and, and programming, and certainly the things that we do provide relative to law enforcement and, and other public services are, are critical as, as well. So I guess I would just encourage that, if nothing else, as an aspiration relative to economic development and what the county might bring in addition to what we already do. And again, you can have the most efficient process, but if it doesn't pencil out to what a couple of folks said, you know, the, the, the chances of moving forward are going to be, you know, slimmer than they would be if we could be a partner. And we need to be discreet about that. We don't have the money to do that everywhere in the county, but I think we know where we need to, to, you know, invest and, and help, you know, encourage that investment from the private sector, but I think it requires some public sector. And we often own, or at least the public sector owns the infrastructure. So, yeah, Phil.
Thanks. So speaking of quality of life, I can't think of a more pressing subject affecting quality of life than, than climate change. So I do think the, the resolution should necessarily have some reflection on that. You mentioned climate change and VMT in your opening statements. Dave and I completely agree with you in terms of, you know, what we're trying to do in the broader context in terms of those objectives, reducing VMT especially. But I do think that the intersection between our planning, especially our planning responsibilities and how that can, how sound planning can help mitigate some of the, the effects or contributions to climate change is something that we want to include. One of the things I'm, I'm feeling more and more sensitive to is that if this resolution is too heavy in delivering a message that could be interpreted as, well, we're just going to try and make life as easy as possible for the development community, we're, we're going to have half of chambers full of people saying, what the hell are you doing? So I'm not suggesting that we include climate change for that reason, but it does, it does occur to me that I think it needs to be balanced. And I think we'd be completely remiss if we didn't have some mention of, again, the intersection of planning and, and trying to do our part in, in terms of responding to the climate crisis.
I wanted to also add that I think it would be good to add in the resolution that we will establish meaningful metrics to measure success, to measure and reward successes. And maybe to Supervisor Serna's point, the metrics could be not only for the development side, but what we're delivering as far as attainable housing and so that we can maybe follow that up with a communication, public communication, a plan that would let the public know our successes.
Okay. Any other comments? We're only on number three and I think we have 25 or something, so I'd.
That's okay. This is exactly what I wanted, was a discussion and this is incredibly helpful feedback, not just for the resolution, but it bleeds into a lot of this stuff. So this is all time well spent and we can, you know, we have 40 minutes or so. We can jump around. There's a couple of recommendations I definitely want to get to and we can, you know, gloss over some others. You know, number four, this is really important for me, rebuilding employee trust and confidence in both leadership, right, the seventh floor as well as the board. You know, and it speaks to a lot of the things that frankly, we're going to be doing a lot of. This is just sort of my style in particular. During my stint as community development director, you know, I was peppering folks with, you know, department-wide emails because that, that's important to me is building a connection between leadership and staff. So that, that's something we're going to be pushing really heavily, just regular communication with staff and the board as well. I really want to establish a good feedback loop with the board on this. Briefings are great, you know, obviously items coming to the board as well to make sure that you're fully informed and also your thoughts are dealt with, you know, as part of the process. So this is really important to me. If you have thoughts on this about what we can do better to establish that trust with staff or, or thoughts of, you know, staff, you know, and establishing a level of trust with the board, et cetera, I'm all ears as well.
Okay. Any thoughts on that? Because again, Ann, you were.
Well, I just want to reiterate what Dave just said. This is consistent with the culture change work we're doing countywide around really rebuilding trust through all levels of the organization. So this fits perfectly with that.
I guess I would just throw this out to you, Supervisor Desmond wants to speak, but is there suggestions for how we might engage differently? Obviously, you know, we come into session, we, you know, again, these are full-time positions plus for board members, but I mean, it's important. And so I guess if I see building trust, you know, with the board and certainly keeping us informed, are there things that staff might, again, if we're having this free flow exchange, you know, offer, again, with, you know, and we'll take it the right way, I can assure you, things that, you know, that we could, should, and might be asked to do. And I guess I would just put that forward because I think that, that is the, kind of the two-way flow of this. It's not just our CEO and administrative staff and all of our line staff. It's this board is, you know, we represent the 1,600,000 people in this county and a lot of different things. So I guess I would just say, ask that, kind of pose that question back to you, Dave, and folks, if there's things that, you know, you would ask of us as well. So, Rich, you were going to weigh in. I think Patrick is, you know, good.
Yeah, the only I was going to add is I, I think that, you know, everything we're talking about today in terms of including into this resolution, the importance of improving quality of life for everybody, meeting GHG emission goals as an objective of the board, improving housing. I would imagine, you know, you told me staff is concerned that some of them have the perception that we're kind of giving away the store, you know, to some developers, but maybe making, making it clear to them that this is, this is in furtherance of all these other objectives. Their, their success, our collective success, is going to further all these other objectives. So just.
And I think this kind of discussion is helpful for staff as well to know where the entire board is coming from. I mean, often their, their interaction with board members might be on a one-off basis, right? There's, there's an issue with a project or something that they might engage on, but not often sort of in a holistic manner like this. So hearing your thoughts as a board in this fashion, I think is very helpful for that. You know, something that I pushed early on here and that we're doing more of is having younger folks, younger, you know, I feel like I'm the old man already.
As compared to the older folks?
You know, people earlier in their career to present to the board. Is that better? That was really helpful for me early on in my career where I was, you know, honestly allowed to do things that were probably well before the time that I should have been and that helped me tremendously. And one of those things was presenting at the board. And I think that's such a difficult skill for most people, including myself, to build. Allowing some staff to, to have that experience, it really breaks down walls between staff and the board because, I mean, being in that podium, I mean, you, you're all probably very used to it at this point, but when you're at that podium, the lights are on you, everybody's wrapped around you in a horseshoe fashion. It's, it's intimidating for most folks, right? And, and allowing that experience and people, that opportunity to build a relationship with the board in that fashion, I think is really helpful. And I, I know that hasn't always been the case here where only more experienced staff, as opposed to older folks, more experienced staff, were the ones presenting to the board only. I personally think allowing people that are earlier in their career to get that experience is very helpful. And you guys are so nice to new presenters as well. You're very nice to new, you really are.
Most of us are.
And I say that with all honesty because not all boards operate in the same fashion. And I believe you are very kind to staff generally and especially when it's new presenters. So I thank you for that.
I was just going to say that I, I really glad you brought that up. I think probably the, the most, I guess, growth in terms of the ability to present really well and articulate, you know, a presentation or a staff report, I'll use Kimber as a, an example, you know, I, you know, she's, I consider her a young person. And, but, you know, I think she's probably presented to us a total of maybe three or four times. But just over those three or four times, I can tell she's really kind of grown a little bit more comfortable in how she, you know, not presents subject matter, but presents herself. And I think that is a, kind of a great case study in, in how, you know, someone can really grow professionally, especially when it comes to trying to set aside the nervousness of, you know, speaking in public. But anyhow, I, I think your, your point's well taken. You know, the, the, the idea of professional investment, I think is something that you might want to run with. And by that, I mean, I think to someone else's point, maybe it was Supervisor Desmond that mentioned it earlier, making sure that your staff understand that they're a critical part of a team and without their professional investment and their responsibility is being applied, you know, it's not going to, you know, whatever the objective of, of the moment is, it's not going to succeed. So that might be kind of a, just a simple, you know, nomenclature shift type of thing, but I think really instilling in our planning and building personnel, the fact that they're just a critical part of what we're trying to do, you know, could be part of that culture shift that we're all, you know, we've been talking about for so long, but one that is really personalized, you know, at an individual level.
Yeah. I think it goes, certainly recognizing certainly folks, you know, not just at the podium, but said by several folks here that, you know, acknowledging that, providing that, you know, opportunity, but certainly, you know, giving them the confidence. And if that means, you know, you know, training session on, you know, not just on how to present yourself with the facts, but also be comfortable in the setting and, you know, not five ogres sitting up there that, you know, are going to, you know, look for, look to, you know, undercut you in any way. And again, I've seen that certainly with water resources and department transportation staff recently, but in other cases too. So I just think it's important to give those folks the opportunities, you said, Dave, to, to present and to hopefully get the satisfaction of doing that and, you know, but also, you know, kind of work in that pressure situation, but to have the confidence that the, it's, you know, to help them prepare certainly as they go through their career, you know, and we're all working in the same arena, it's public service. And so I think it's really important. And let me, just kind of around the table, anybody other thoughts? I mean...
Dare I say Supervisor, Natale would be willing to come back and host a mock board sessions.
Hey.
Sure.
One of the best trainings I did on presentations was where actually videotape you and you have to go back and watch. Boy, that, that can be a painful process to go through. Count the ums, right? But very enlightening. And, you know, early on in my career, I'd, I'd go back and watch every one of my presentations. And again, extremely painful, but very valuable.
Yeah. Any other thoughts?
Well, in addition to this whole process in terms of talking about staff, giving newer staff an opportunity to present to the board, it is intimidating the first time you get up there. And I just want to reiterate what Dave said is when we've had conversations at the staff level about sending someone newer to the podium, we all comment on, oh, the board's so nice to people who are brand new. And that really helps them build their confidence to want to do it again. So I just wanted to reiterate, thanks for that.
We're not so nice to the veteran presenters.
You sometimes poke at us a little more, but that's okay. We can take it. But when you're brand new.
Still turn red every day.
Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. Anybody else? I mean, we got, you got folks at the table. Yeah, Mike?
I'll just chime in on that because I think it's a great point. And, you know, that can lead to somebody being here for 35 years like me, you know, you get thrown in early. One thing that came out in the meeting that Dave and Ann hosted was at least one person really didn't know who the board was, what they did, or who they worked for.
Yeah.
So in.
Sounds like our constituents.
So in terms of bridging that gap and between, you know, staff and the board's function and their roles and as people, I think, you know, what you're suggesting is, is tremendous. But it was a little surprising that, wait, you don't know who the board actually is? So.
Don't they do an orientation? I remember when I started with the county, they used to sit through and, you know, went through. Yeah, but maybe lost in that.
I think for line staff, sometimes that does get lost. And a couple of years ago, several of us put together a binder for department heads and deputies around the charter and the code and the board and, you know, who, who was whom. And we realized when that comment was made that that's something that we probably need to drive down a little further into the organization. Because they really was like, well, everyone talks about the board and points up, like, who are they and what do they do? And so I had to give a little spiel about, you know, what the role of the board was. I said, you know, you have to understand the, the board is the decision maker for all policy in, in the county. And, you know, if you want to do a contract and it's, you know, more than $50,000, the board has to approve it. And then, and they did, then they did ask, well, who does the board report to? And we said, the public. I mean, they're elected by the public and that's who holds them accountable. But it was a very interesting, good point, Michael, because it was a very interesting conversation.
And one thing that I've been involved in in other places is quarterly meetings, meetings every six months, whatever, all hands meetings and actually inviting individual board members to come in and speak directly to staff about really whatever you want. It's more about making that connection and, you know, you learning a bit more about staff and, and staff having the opportunity to learn a bit more about you. That, that's been pretty successful and so don't be surprised if you. successful. And so don't be surprised if you start getting calls with offers to come to speak to our staff. Again, less about what you talk about and more just making that connection can be so important.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in? You know, I think it's, just as we talk about kind of understanding the structure of the county, that, you know, this county is 1,000 square miles nearly in size. And, you know, we know we've got incorporated cities, but the geography and the makeup of our communities are distinctive in many cases. And you look at the rural outline areas and if, you know, you know, and it's not that they have to understand, you know, the makeup of every community, but I think there are certainly distinctions and differences. And we talked about improving processes, but I think it's understanding the community, what you're going to work for, you know, it's like saying the question that you posed, who does the board work for? You work for all these folks. And some of the decisions that relates to the process we're talking about now, obviously, are, you know, tailored towards the unincorporated area. But I think it's important for folks to know that. And I would encourage that to be a part of orientation, that this diverse geography, the diverse cultural makeup, community makeup, and, you know, you can, within 45 minutes, go from Orangeville or just about, I guess, to the Antioch Bridge. Might not get there in 45 minutes, but, but depending on how fast you drive and what road you take. But I would just suggest that, you know, I think that needs to be understood because even whether you're working water resources, Department of Transportation and planning, surveys and so forth, some may have greater or lesser understanding or building inspection. But that, and that's one of the challenges of serving this diverse community. You have different area codes, you've got different, you know, a whole variety of zip codes, you've got different school districts, fire districts. It is, it's complex. And it's probably much more so, Dave, to your point, than a lot of jurisdictions. And yet I think that's one of the opportunities that allows us as a community to recognize the importance of how neighborhoods are constructed, our business districts, our rural agricultural component and suburban component as well. So I just think, again, you know, and that's the type of thing I think that board members certainly could talk to in your sessions. But I think it may be part of the orientation too, is to do a little walkthrough of, you know, what constitutes, you know, and if you have questions to, you know, talk with your supervisor, talk with, you know, and have an understanding about how our community is comprised and what's made, you know, who makes it up, but also what it's made up of. So our industries as well. So any other thoughts? I know now we're at number five.
So with that, you know, maybe a quick time check. We have about 25 minutes. There's a few recommendations, you know, I personally wanted to get to for sure. And then if there's any that you definitely want to hit as well, we can, you know, certainly add those to the list. So I definitely want to get to 10, 11, which is the Development Process Manager that we started talking about a little bit earlier, 13, the Development Process Oversight Committee or Commission, and then to the extent we can, a couple others. Are there other key recommendations that you wanted to discuss as well?
So if we jump from five to 10, anything in between there? I just, I thought maybe I'd touch on nine real quickly because I think it's key to some of the things we're just talking about. But any of those other ones that are in between there? Not that they're unimportant.
Right.
Well, and some of them, you were like number eight, obviously that's something you've already really implemented to a large degree, right, Dave? I mean, so just.
Yeah, I mean, eight, that definitely captures my expectation for pre-app meetings. The interesting thing is, you know, we, we're somewhat challenged with sometimes applicants have a fully fledged project basically ready to submit, and they'll, they'll call for a pre-app meeting. And we absolutely should be all hands on deck, having read everything beforehand and offering very specific feedback because it is a very well fleshed out project. Other times, we have people that come in that literally scribble on a piece of paper and say, I'm kind of thinking this, what do you all think? And then wanting very specific feedback back. And that, that's not possible. So, you know, and we do have another process for those sort of pre-app lights, but it really isn't taken advantage of all that often. So I think, you know, I think we have a little bit of discussion to do to set very clear expectations, what, let's call it a true pre-app should be and how staff responds, and then how we respond via that pre-app light, which again, can be extremely valuable. It's just a different beast.
And that's what I hear about a lot. They're the smaller projects, right? Which still may involve multiple departments. Yes.
You know, and just on that point, Dave, because, and I know that some are related to budget, but there was a time when I think it was, it was clear to staff that, you know, you need to charge out your time. And so when the supervisor calls or you get an applicant, you know, you know, that's free advice, but, you know, how do we charge it out? And so and when budgets were tight, I think that's, you know, maybe, you know, subsided quite a bit. But I can still remember even, you know, staff conversation, well, you know, when you call Mr. Supervisor, you know, how do we charge the time out? Well, you know, that's what we have a general fund and that's, but, you know. And so I think that can become a barrier too for taking time out of a busy day for a staff person at a different level. Well, you know, I got these paying customers, but you have this broader customer base we were talking about, which is the people of this county. And so they have inquiries, as long as it's not going too much in depth. I think there needs to be an understanding that that's what your general budget covers. And whether it comes from a supervisor's office or from a constituent or inquiring party at any of those levels, be helpful to people to the degree that you can. And don't just, you know, direct them, well, you can get a pre-app for 1,000 bucks and that, you know, that's where you start. No, you start with the conversation. And as you said, you know, maybe a pre-app light or whatever, or just a general question. And I would hope that our departments and folks that represent around the table aren't still, I found that it was kind of hampering the interactions at time. And it's part of it came out of the recession, obviously, when we had some serious cutbacks. But, and again, if that's an issue, then you need to tell the board because in our general funding for departments and/or allocations for whatever department it is, if there needs to be a component there for that, you know, public interface that we would assume is going to be the way we do customer service, then I think the board needs to be apprised of that because I think it was conveyed differently under different administration. Certainly some of the outcome of our decisions, you know, to have to, you know, reel back because of the recession. But I would just encourage folks to, you know, be willing to spend some time with folks as appropriate. So, yeah, Phil?
Yeah. David, I just want to ask, do you have a particular interest in number 10 because of the alternatives here? Because, you know, in terms of, maybe it's not community development that has the direct oversight, maybe it's planning under CDD. I mean, so I'm curious to know what, what is driving your particular interest.
Yeah. And I really didn't anticipate a large discussion about this because it's, you know, really kind of in the weeds operational stuff. I just wanted to mention that, you know, that there is, you know, this is somewhat controversial with staff and just wanted to put that on the table. And it's, it sort of interacts with recommendation 30, which speaks to co-locating staff from different departments in one physical space. And that interacts with other conversations about telework, et cetera. But, you know, this calls for community development to oversee, you know, plan checkers, say, from, you know, multiple other departments where it would be sort of a matrix managed type approach where, say, a water resources staff person would, that's doing plan check, would still be part of water resources, but functionally on a day-to-day basis, community development would be overseeing their work and providing direction. I've seen that work in other places. It is not easy. It's, it does take a deft management style to make sure that, you know, both departments or all departments are communicating extremely well and that those staff aren't getting sort of competing priorities from their two bosses, for lack of a better term. So I didn't expect a lot of discussion there. I just wanted to put that concern on the table that I've heard from staff. We have a lot more talking to do before we get close to implementing this, if that's the way we go. But again, just wanted to share some of those thoughts from staff with you.
I'm just trying to kind of picture in my head the, I guess, the alternative, you know, organizational structure here. So if it wasn't what is being recommended here, what would it otherwise be in your, in your estimation?
So it'd be basically how it is now, where you have, you know, community development, you have transportation, water resources, et cetera, just by way of example. And all of those might have a function that is reviewing improvement plans, for instance. Right now, those people in each of those departments are part of that department structure proper. Whereas this is calling for Troy essentially in large part with community development would functionally on a day-to-day basis oversee and direct the work of water resources staff and DOT staff as it relates to improvement plan review. Right now, I think community development is providing sort of that coordination role and clearinghouse role for that type of work. But at least what I know and understand is they're not directing and overseeing that work day-to-day. They're not telling, you know, setting priorities for water resources staff or DOT staff.
So now I understand the sensitivity, I suppose.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for that.
So more to come on that for sure.
But Dave, it would be specific to just that role, not overseeing that section of the department on a long-term basis?
Right. Yeah. So that's the matrix managed point of view. That, let's say, water resources staff, because Michael's looking at me. You know, water resources staff.
I'm going to say something.
Would still be part of that department, still go to their meetings, their trainings, et cetera. But on that day-to-day basis, as it relates to their role, again, say, as part of the improvement plan review process, they would essentially report to community development or receive direction, prioritization for workload from that department.
And on that, it wouldn't necessarily be 100% because the plan review staff do other things.
Correct.
For the larger department. So, you know, if it was going to do, you know, there'd have to be some sort of, you know, shared resource.
And it would probably be related to number 11 with the Development Process Manager. So that person would likely report to community development and be overseeing the entire process, which would involve multiple departments.
And that is definitely a recommendation that I want to get to today.
Yes.
This one's very important. Maybe we can just jump right in. So the Development Process Manager, you know, we've talked with the board a little bit about, and actually the board has already approved three positions for this function. Right now, those are principal planner positions. Our goal would be to actually create a new job classification, but that takes upwards of a year or more to do. And we don't want to wait that long to fill these. So we'll likely be filling them as planners and then transitioning over time. This concept of a Development Process Manager, Mr. Carriage implemented in the city of Sacramento, and it actually remains today, but in a little bit different form than what's being recommended here. So the recommendation here is that for all projects, a Development Process Manager is attached to the project from the point where an application is submitted to planning all the way through construction. And there's really not a lot of caveats as to what projects qualify or not. In the city of Sacramento, the way it's working currently is that a Development Process Manager is attached to projects after the planning process. They pick it up in improvement plans and through construction for projects with a valuation over $1 million. They used to be $5 million, they dropped it to $1 million. They have eight process managers to pick up that workload. So what we're talking about here is more expansive from planning all the way through. And, you know, unless we put some guardrails on here as to which kind of projects get a manager or not, we could be looking at the need for eight or more of these. So I love the concept of the Development Process Manager. It's very similar to what our economic development staff, you know, Rick Bilas and Chelsea Bowman in particular, have been doing for a number of years as it relates to metro airpark projects and others. You know, it's not that all these projects would get special treatment, you know, quicker turnaround times, et cetera. It would be more having that single point of contract, contact, apologize, that would help usher that project through the process. And they wouldn't necessarily have the expertise or be empowered to just override staff left and right, but they would absolutely be empowered to identify meetings or identify issues and call meetings with folks that are in this room to help solve problems. And I think that's really powerful. You know, there's going to be a person that fits this role few and far between that has all the expertise necessary to weigh in on all issues, right? Engineering issues, et cetera. But it's more about being that point of contact, finding issues, calling meetings, solving those problems with the help of department heads and others.
What, so in terms of who would report to the Development Process Manager and who does the Development Process Manager report to, can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure. So that, my current vision is that they would report to the, you know, they'd be part of community development, reporting to Troy.
Okay.
But they would work across departments. And that would be made very clear by our office, such that all departments understand their role. As to exactly the structure, depending on how we sort of frame up this program, then leads to how many of these folks we need, which then sort of lends itself to the structure kind of conversation. So if we have three, we could easily have it be a flat thing. If we're talking about 10 of these, you know, we probably need some level of structure to them. And I would say that, you know, we, going back to Ray Carriage's time, we actually stole this concept, the county did at the time Ray was doing it, the city, we tried it here. So we heard a little bit of feedback from staff along those lines, but we did it differently, where the idea was that we would just sort of tack this duty on to staff that are otherwise doing other things. So pick a planner that's known for doing good work and they'll also in their spare time be a Development Process Manager, pick a, you know, transportation engineer, et cetera. So they weren't dedicated to this. And also, right as it was coming out of the ground and being built, the great recession hit and we laid everybody off. So it just, unfortunately, and again, no fault of the counties, right? I mean, it was just dire times and tough decisions had to be made. So this time, we're really talking about something different. We're talking about dedicated staff who are fantastic at customer service, who know how to reach across departmental lines to solve problems or get people together to have problems be solved. And I think this has all the elements needed for a successful outcome. That, I guess the question here is, I'm, I'll assume, but I'll also ask if there's support for this. And assuming that there is, you know, should we be providing some level of barrier to entry, for lack of a better term, right? Because if every single project, every cell tower to, you know, 500 unit subdivision is assigned to project manager, you know, we'll definitely be back with a fairly significant growth request to accommodate that.
I assume a lot of this, maybe all of it, is subject to me and confirm.
Yes.
Question. So would there be in some of these other models? Well, first of all, I'm a big supporter of this. And I think we've seen it in a few projects in District Three where, you know, Rick, for instance, came in, got involved and was really a huge benefit to the, to the project, to the applicant. In some of these models, is there an additional charge if they're assigned to the applicant, if they're assigned a process manager? Does it increase the cost? I don't know. I mean, when you think about the threshold, maybe it could be appropriate in certain situations. I don't know. I'm just, I was curious. Do they, do they do that in the city of Sacramento?
I do not know. That's a great question. You know, it could be a general fund funded operation. It could be a fee-for-service type of a thing. I think that's a great question. We need to dig into that.
Dave, I, I think it's a great idea. It speaks to what I mentioned earlier about having that single point of contact. I think the potential pitfall though, could be the real and perceived workload that each would have. So someone needs, I guess it would be Troy, someone needs to apply their own judgment about each manager's workload because like you just mentioned, you'll have cell towers to PUDs, right? So they're each going to have some very different expectations in terms of time and energy that has to be put into those very different projects. And I would think that you'd want to have a lot of balance in terms of, you know, from manager to manager so that they don't individually feel either overburdened or not getting the type of projects they want. So it's something to consider.
Agreed. And this wouldn't replace, at least the way I view this, it wouldn't replace the planner that's assigned to a project or the building inspector, right, or whomever. It would be a manager that sort of floats above that entire process and works with all of those other project managers assigned to that portion of the process. But they can follow it all the way from beginning to end and have that continuity of understanding of the applicant's goals and what's happened prior that informs where they are today. So their workload, I very much appreciate that comment. And workload division will be an important thing, but it'll be less about doing a lot of the nitty-gritty work and more about that facilitation role.
Yes.
What would the suggested barrier be?
Good question.
Barrier to entry? Or do you have an idea of what that looks like?
You know, I use the cell tower example because I'm kind of thinking along those lines to some degree that maybe not every single application sort of warrants that, the need for that level of treatment. Whether that be set on a valuation basis, that makes sense when you're sort of in the building process as opposed to the planning process. So if we are to have it from planning, you know, cradle to grave, it might be related to the type of application as opposed to the valuation. But that's something we're still exploring. And if there's thoughts to that, and I'm, again, all ears.
I guess one of the things is, you know, we need to look at, are we over-regulating? Meaning, for example, like you use cell towers as a good example. The city of Sacramento, we developed a cell tower policy, which included co-location and things like that. So that if an applicant came in with a cell tower project, you know, it was a fairly quick process because they, they met all of the criteria that was established. You know, we, so it's, we're not treating everything that comes through the same way. And I think we need to look at where we could do some things by right, some things that as long as you meet these criteria, then you have an expedited process. It seems like, so that we're not comparing, you know, metro airpark to a cell tower.
Right.
Yeah.
I would just say too, I think that, you know, one of the things, and it goes to some of the points that Phil made, that, you know, how you allocate work, but you get, not to get too top-heavy, you know, you're trying to have a facilitator, and we talked earlier about, you know, giving individual planners the assignment and different, you know, staff members being on teams and so forth. And I, you know, maybe there's a bigger matrix in the construct here that I guess maybe I should visualize on paper. But again, you know, I just, you know, think about, you know, how projects proceed. If they proceed at a rapid, more rapid rate, then maybe there's, you know, some of these things do just take time. And if you're gonna assign somebody just to be the troubleshooter, that's great. But if, you know, when I hear the numbers you're talking about here, and even with the volume, as I understand it, that, you know, we're seeing here in recent times, I think we just need to be careful how you construct this in a way that's smart, makes sense, helps facilitate, and, you know, as I would say, troubleshoot, you know, different aspects or, you know, be there to be that resource to bridge the various departments, the various disciplines. On the other hand, you know, when we're scrambling to the points made here earlier, and your number one, about trying to hire in and get folks that'll get some experience with our organization, or maybe they bring that from where they come from previously, I think we could be very challenged for many, many years to come in just trying to fill these positions. And then you get the upper mobility, which you want to encourage within the departments, within the ranks of our various, you know, areas of expertise. But holding on to folks and then, you know, but then making sure you got folks at the line level that continue to do that, that are skilled, that maybe enjoy working at that level. Again, it'll be something that's gonna be figured out over time, but I guess I would just add a little caution that, you know, maybe looking at trying to do something that would be more perfected, that we may get in the way, obviously, of just trying to do the day-to-day work, which we, you know, we need, you know, we need folks that can do that, can do the staff reports, can do the analysis, provide the documentation that's important to advancing these, doing the work in the field regarding inspections and other work that's required. So I guess I would just encourage us to, you know, maybe keep in mind that you get too many levels removed in trying to help facilitate things. You can potentially just, you know, I think, create more headaches for folks that are gonna have to administer this and the public that we're trying to serve, so. Any other comments? So that was on number 11, right? And again, we can run a little bit past the noon hour, but I don't want to rush this. This is a good conversation. You're seeking direction, so Dave, I'll let you keep moving us along.
Yeah, I mean, the last one that I really wanted to hit on, obviously, I'd love your thoughts on any and all of it, but number 13, the creation of a development process oversight commission or committee. Let me turn to that. So the report speaks to how this committee or commission would operate. They would provide oversight for the review process. They'd be reporting back to the board on an annual basis as to their findings. If the, if staff or the county is contemplating new regulations above and beyond what the federal or state government already require, we would bring those proposals to the committee or commission before the board to get their input, et cetera. And the recommendation is to have this be a temporary type of setup, where it would have a three-year sunset. It would not be a forever type of body, à la the Planning Commission. It would be really for us to build a closer relationship with some of the industry professionals and have them be a more formal touchpoint before heading to the board when we're talking about the potential for new regulations. So I'd love your thoughts about the value you see in this. And then also, whether or not, if we go this route, it makes sense to have these positions, let's call it, you know, a dozen folks, for lack of a better term, whether they be appointed by the board, and if so, being a brown act body and all the pros and cons that comes with that, or whether we should have them be selected by the county executive office in consultation with everybody. And there's pros and cons there, right? If you have, you know, a brown act body, obviously, their authority is more formal, but it necessitates, you know, agendas and a lot more, you know, work for flow or somebody else, you know, another body to be managing. Whereas we have a bit more flexibility if we go the other route, but it is a bit less formal as well. So I tend to lean towards the latter, but I'm certainly open to questions, comments, and your thoughts on that.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
How would, how do you foresee us getting past the expected criticism if we were to do this? That it's the fox guarding the hen house?
Yeah. You know, at least as I read this, they would not have decision-making authority, right? It would be a recommendation body only. But I do understand that perspective. Clearly, there would be a, there would be a clear bent from, you know, that committee or commission, right? Obviously, it's, you know, spoke of as to being industry professionals, you know, developers, contractors, designers, architects, et cetera, and, you know, their clear goal is to get things built, right? So duly noted. I'm not sure I have a good answer as of yet about that. Other comments? Sue?
I, I think if you feel it would be more productive to do it with the latter and a board, a commission that's appointed by staff, I could support that. And I think it seems like a good idea to have input from industry professionals for a couple of years to help sort out, okay, because they, we've had complaints. It would just involve them in the solution, so I don't think it's a bad idea. Thanks.
I would just comment, Rich, I didn't want to weigh in, just that, to Phil's point, though, I think, you know, it's one thing to seek the feedback and, you know, how are we doing, you know, and certainly under the auspices of a board resolution. But I can tell you, just as we're sitting here today, that I get the sense from some of the folks who are advisory council members in areas in District Five, who are concerned that actions that our board took a couple of years ago really skewed very heavily towards, you know, the development community, and not that these communities are necessarily anti-development, but they, you know, they certainly, you know, I think have expectation about what their role is in the process. And I think, whether formalized or informally, you can always seek out the information informally. You want to structure this in a way that comes to the board. But I would just say that if it's the will of this board to go in this direction, we need to be, you know, considerate of that. And so it may be that a planning commissioner, again, those are the board appointees, but you may want to include a CPAC representative or two, and that might get some, you know, pushback from those that are the industry experts. But to the conversation we've had here on a number of points this morning, I think, again, you know, we have a responsibility to the entirety of the populace of this county, and certainly we have, you know, a responsibility to folks who engage in processes that will help us, you know, achieve housing goals and other activity that's important from economic perspective and a quality of life perspective. But I just, again, I would just caution that a bit, because I think that it could play out in a way that, you know, might help us be most efficient, well-operated operation and organization. But if it leaves out that component, the board ultimately will, you know, fill that as will, you know, our staff. And so, again, I would just offer that. If you're gonna look at this construct, you're not gonna, you know, and the environmental community. I mean, let's be real about it. I mean, you know, we talk about the Climate Action Plan, and we've had that, you know, and I think our staff has done a good job in trying to get that information and feedback. Recognizing ultimately the board's gonna make a decision with, you know, staff recommendation and all the work behind it. But I think if you lean too heavily towards the experts and exclude those, that somewhere along the line, there's gonna be a bump in the road for, you know, for the board supervisors at some point in time, so. I think, Rich, and then Sue.
Thank you. Those are great points. I was gonna talk a little bit about the community involvement, and that also speaks to the broader customer base, right? Our customers are not just the applicants. It's broader than that. So I totally agree with you. And obviously, it would include, would department heads be included in that as well, Dave? And would that be part of the vision? I mean, is that what you're?
You know, the way I'm reading it and having talked with Ray about this, they would not be, staff would not be a formal part of the committee or commission, but staff would be constantly interacting with that body, right? Running, you know, process improvement initiatives through the body to get their opinions, new regulations through that body, again, to get their opinions. It would be almost like a CPAC or a structure like that, but with at least how it's constructed in the report, really made up of just industry folks.
Okay. Well, I support it, certainly the latter approach, but with some kind of community involvement, as the president totally indicated. And I think it's important to have staff, more staff involvement as well. I mean, I think nothing certainly would preclude you and Ann and other department heads from still attending other, you know, meetings, of course, hosted by industry people. So you'll still be getting feedback in those contexts, in those forums. But those would just be some of my thoughts in terms of this structure, this recommendation.
I don't know if this is a good idea, but the whole idea is to improve the project, to improve the processes through the system. And so would it be reasonable to include someone from every aspect of the project? Like an expert in water, roads, transit, engineering, parks, finance, legal, rather than thinking of it as the development community, thinking of it as experts from every aspect of the project that can improve this project through the system? It's just a thought.
Yeah, and that's, the discussions that I've had with Mr. Carriage about this recommendation would be generally just that. So a sample list of folks might be, you know, a large developer, a low-income housing developer, a smaller contractor, a home remodeler, an architect, a civil or structural engineer, a public works engineer, an attorney, an environmental consultant.
It's a big committee.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So, you know, I don't take this lightly. Building another committee or commission, right? I mean, and that's some of the feedback we've heard from staff, too. More oversight potentially slows things down, right? So there's an upside, but there's a cost to it as well.
Well, this isn't really, well, at least the way I read this and the way it's explained, it's not really oversight, it's feedback, right?
Depending on how we construct it, yes. I see it as more of an official feedback loop as opposed to formal oversight with some kind of authority behind it.
Yeah, I kind of object to that, if that's what the idea is from Ray. Just because I think the oversight has to, you know, lie with what we just discussed relative to number 11, so. I think it, I think we just need to be, if we decide to do this, make it very clear this is about getting professional feedback about processes and, you know, different aspects of different projects, I suppose. But I just feel more and more like it's a bit of a slippery slope, but.
So I think this is a good idea. I did, I hate to bring it back to Sacramento again, but that's what I know. That I did see it work in Sacramento. Matter of fact, for a while, my predecessor, Jimmy Yee, was the chair of it. And so I guess part of the reason I say that line there is because sometimes we forget that these professionals are members of the community. You know, they're not outliers that are, you know, in the development world. There are also people like the Jimmy Yee's of the world who are, you know, happen to have an expertise, but they're also community members. I'd rather see that than a commission. The formalized commission, I think is a bad idea.
And I think it would be really important how we describe the charter, if you will, for this group, because it does mention in here that they would provide oversight and input. And I think we need to really focus on the input and the feedback versus the oversight.
I also think we should be prepared that if we do do this, you could very, I could very easily see local, you know, climate crisis activists say, well, if you're gonna have this for development process review and feedback, you should have a committee for, you know, how you're doing on your climate action plan. You should have another committee or commission in terms of, you know, how you're doing on VMT reduction. So just.
I am very sensitive to that, absolutely. And I'm also sensitive to this growing into just a, you know, a monthly community workshop, too, right? Because, I mean, we can hold those anytime we want. So if we have every, every potential interest represented on this committee, then it really is just a public workshop at some point. So I got a lot of good feedback here. I think there's a lot more discussion we need to have before launching anything like this. So we'll be talking more before anything along these lines sees the light of day.
Anybody else? Any staff want to weigh in? Yeah, go ahead.
I look at this as sort of parallel to what happens, and we're talking about, you know, getting feedback on new regulations. Every time we have a stormwater quality permit update, new requirements, we'll hold, you know, as water resources, as the stormwater partnership, we'll hold, you know, stakeholder meetings with environmental folks and developer interests to get feedback. And I'll say, we've had a lot of, a lack of participation from development in those processes for whatever reason. They didn't, they didn't respond as we anticipated. This could be a way to make that opportunity more formally known and the expectation that they do provide the feedback, because at the end of the day, if we don't hear it, then we won't necessarily foresee everything that could cause a problem when their projects actually come across the table. So it may be something like that, less as a commission or committee, but something that, this is your opportunity, development community. We need you to be here.
No, I would just say too, one thing is unique, and again, doesn't go so much development process, but obviously with Siobhan, Eric here, you know, human services delivery and human service connectivity, public safety, not just in design, but, you know, how we, again, because we charge per-house fee for, you know, patrol services in the unincorporated area. And there's an accounting in the budget for that, but I think, you know, how we are able to respond going forward in the built environment that's occupied by people. And so I think those are key. They may not be readily evident in somebody just trying to get a permit or get a project approved, but they're what the county assumes and inherits forever and all time and under our auspices of things that we do. And so I think they're key. They're certainly in the general plan. It may not be so much in the day-to-day processing of permits day, but I think they are. Again, that's something different, whereas we don't necessarily do the fire and water, in a lot of cases, or sanitation. We coordinate with all those elements that are, but we certainly do human services and public safety in the areas where this board will continue to have its authorities for development review and approval. So I think keeping that kind of in the back of your mind, and I think just piggybacking off of what Michael said, that an opportunity to discuss those things over time, not just, you know, you know, relative to a public works segment of that. So, you know, we're unique in different ways, which are positives, but there are responsibilities as well. So and parks, recreation is another one, where we don't do the parks directly, but we have the bigger, you know, responsibilities and, you know, the larger holdings of land and so forth. I guess I just wanted to add one other thing, and that is, is that I think, you know, with the habitat conservation program and plan more adopted, and, you know, that's a very small department. I know that, you know, Kim Hudson and, you know, is overseeing the administration of that, but we have other cities as partners to that. But the mitigation occurs in the unincorporated area of the county, in the rural areas of the county. Everything that will go, happens south of Highway 50 that's in the unincorporated area is gonna rely on that plan, our general plan, to allow development to go forward. And I think there needs to be integration of that and support for that. But also, if there are issues that arise, I mentioned very early in my comments this morning, that are really protecting the mom and pops that are being affected, then, you know, yeah, we gotta run the whole gamut of going back up to the federal government. And we don't want to upset the processes that now have allowed facilitation of both public and private projects in a way that makes sense. I just would say that it needs to be integrated, too, because I think that can get lost. You know, people just pay a fee or a housing fee, and they're good, and then it's on us as a county under those other auspices to administer and to make sure that all those other obligations are met, and there are plans behind that. But I just think that, I've experienced some, I think, some significant challenges for a couple of very small projects, including building permits. And so I just, I would say that needs to be integrated into the overall consideration here, because it affects what Ron does, what Michael does in their respective departments in order to have those permit, that permit coverage, let alone the private developments, so. Ann, did you want to add something else? Okay. Board members, we're now at just 10 minutes after noon. I don't want to cut conversation short here, and I know we've got some other time commitments to meet folks. Is it 1:00, Flo, that we're supposed to meet folks? What time we're supposed to go meet for the tour?
Yes, they'll be here at 1:00, and then the tour is set at a specific time.
Okay, so let's maybe kind of go back to you, Dave, and see if we can, you know, you got some feedback on some of these. Anything else that you wanted to bring up, otherwise I want to go to my board colleagues here and see if there's any other items you wanted to call out in this, in the tier one. We didn't get to tier two or the specialty, so.
And that's okay. And that was to be expected. I just want to say thank you so much for engaging in the way you did. I know I'm asking you really. I know I'm asking you really pointed questions very early on in the process, before staff has even sort of formulated our own thoughts fully, and I just really appreciate having this kind of dialogue as we're looking to launch this initiative. This is just so very powerful to have your thoughts, both in this room, as well as formalized in a resolution that we'll bring back to you. I'll do my best to capture everything I heard here in a resolution. I will absolutely not take offense if I bring it back to you and you ask for changes and for me to come back a couple of weeks later. That's perfectly fine, because I want to make sure it, it fully resonates with you before you adopt it. So with that, I just want to say thank you. I'm definitely not going to be the guy to keep you between food, which is wafting this way, so thank you very much, I really appreciate your time.
Thanks, Dave. Let me just go around the table one more time. Patrick, or Sue, or Rich, Bill, any other comments on this? Yeah, well, we, we thank you, Dave. Thanks to all the folks that contributed to this, and obviously a big body of work, but important work as well, and so we certainly commend you to the task. And Amanda, have you got this all financed? Okay. With that, anything else to, we, we are going to take a public comment, I mean, that was on the agenda, right, for anybody who here wants to speak on an off-agenda item, so.
And I don't believe we've had any public comments, let's.
Everybody's sitting way in the back, I mean, you know. So do we have any callers on the phone, or we have that capacity today?
No, we're not, this was in person today, and it was agendized that way.
Okay, all right. Well, then, with that, unless there's any other comments or questions by board members, we'll go ahead and we'll break for lunch, we'll return back in session at 1:00 or thereabouts, and continue with the afternoon, so, all right. Very good, thank you all, thanks, Dave. We'll stay on recess. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started, it's just a little bit after 1:00, and want to thank those who helped bring in lunch, and certainly folks that have joined with us, that we're going to hear from a number of them in just a few moments. But again, thank you for our morning presentations and the really positive engagement with our board members and members of our staff. And so now we're going to enter the afternoon, where we're going to have a number of things planned. So with that, I'll go to Flo to, we, call the, the role to establish a quorum, please.
Okay, Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. And I'll go ahead and read that item into the.
Yes, go ahead and read that, and so we're all back in session, and go ahead and read the next item, please.
Okay. Item number three is the presentation and overview of Department of Human Assistance programs at the Mather Community Campus by Nextmove Homeless Services.
Okay, and Siobhan, are you going to kick this off? She is, she's headed to the podium. Can you lower that automatically?
Or can you raise me automatically? Okay. Good afternoon, board and, and community, who's here? And I just wanted to recognize, we have our Director of Department of Human Assistance, Ethan Die, and his team, and our Nextmove partners here today. So just as, by way of introduction, I wanted to just, first of all, show my gratefulness to this board and the previous boards for really having the vision to set aside space at the Mather Community Campus to serve the unhoused populations. Our programs that are located out here are really designed to ensure that we're giving people the tools to be able to be self-sufficient, to be able to sustain in their own homes once we're able to get them there. And as you'll hear today, it's pretty remarkable, the work that's going on out here and the, and the different services that are being provided. So I'm going to let the team sort of take that part over. But I also just wanted to acknowledge that, that the county can't do this alone in order to really make a dent in this issue of serving the unhoused, serving folks who struggle with addiction. We really do rely on our community-based partners and organizations, and like Nextmove and some of the other organizations that are located out here, such as CETA or VOA, and Ethan will go into some more details about that, but just wanted to thank our partners. We, we as a county, we're just one little piece of this very big community-wide puzzle to really start to solve some of the issues that are most challenging to us. And then finally, I just wanted to say that, you know, even though you'll be hearing about certain programs here today at Mather, one of the things we are doing is embarking on a Mather Community Campus revisioning plan, so we can determine not only what services here are currently here that need to grow and need to expand in capacity, but what else do we need to meet the demands of the day? We know based on our point-in-time counts, we're seeing some populations that are really doing well in terms of services being stood up, and other populations where we really have to lean in and start to do something different. And so we are undertaking a process to really determine how, how is it that we shape this plan into the future, so that we can best meet the needs? And not only the plan for what services and supports are going to grow and be sustainable over time, but also the campus and what that looks like from, from a facilities perspective. So you'll be taking a tour of the campus after this short presentation, and you'll be able to see that there is some work that needs to be done, and we know that, and I appreciate the board's willingness and Supervisor Natoli's drive to really have us look at this in a meaningful way, and the team's committed to doing that. So with that, I wanted to turn it over to Ethan for a little bit more.
Thank you, Siobhan, and just as Ethan's coming forward, just say that as you described it, and we'll hear more fully from Ethan, that, and I don't know what Ethan was going to cover in his overview, but, you know, the campus property, the 30-plus acres, and again, I know Troy Givens, who works in economic development and some of the base transfer, came to us well over 25 years ago now, and, you know, it was, it came with the auspices that we would provide, you know, the services, again, we had to structure them, but it wasn't always so, and these were the, you know, the barracks, and, and, you know, have served both military personnel, but certainly our program, and we're going to hear about that very, very well. But there's a lot of positives, and again, I think the revision, as you've said, is important for the investments we made and the investments that we will make, and, and the good that comes out of all the programs that are, that are here. And I would just note, I think some of you have heard me say this before, but that it was early in my first term of, of service, many, many years ago, that we were contemplating what would be, what, what would happen to the then, you know, depopulated barracks, and what would go in relative to homeless services, and it wasn't without a lot of contention. And I know, I heard my colleagues talking about some of the meetings they had here in the last few days, where they had, you know, maybe several hundred folks. We had several hundred times, about three or four, at some of our community meetings because of concerns about what would happen and how we would structure programs. But now, fast forwarding, you know, 25-plus years later, we've had, you know, very successful programs that have helped many thousands of people, and I know people around this table and many others are very familiar with that. But I just wanted to set the tone and certainly turn back to you, Ethan, for, you know, introductions and some more overview.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the board, Ethan Die, Director for the Department of Human Assistance. First, on behalf of DHA and all of the folks we have served over the last few years here at Mather Community Campus, I want to offer a heartfelt, a heartfelt thank you to this board and past boards for your continued support. The programming out here at Mather Community Campus impacts lives every day, and that is the great work that we do, and we could not do that without the commitment of funding from the board and the space that we are allocated out here. In a few seconds, I'm actually going to turn over the mic to, or the microphone to Ali Not, Alondra Nira, who is a leader within our department, who works with our community providers and customers and staff out here to run these amazing programs. So I just wanted to take a few seconds to thank you on behalf of the families, the singles, and the transitional age youth that preside, or that reside out here. Thank you. Ali?
Hello. Yep. Thank you for lowering the mic, I am a shorter person. Thank you again for that introduction, Ethan. First off, I would like to thank the board for this opportunity to share with you all the great work that's being done on the Mather Campus. My name is Alondra Nira, or Ali, and I'm a program planner with DHA for homeless services, and I have the great pleasure of working with Nextmove Homeless Services in supporting those experiencing homelessness on the Mather Campus. Nextmove has been providing direct services and hope to those individuals most vulnerable within our communities for over 50 years. And since 2015, they partnered with Goodwill of Sacramento and their family of nonprofits to enhance their opportunity to expand the services within our communities. In 2020, DHA and Nextmove began their collaborative effort to enhance services at the Mather Campus by partnering together and supporting the ongoing operations of an emergency shelter program for single adults, transitional family shelter, and a housing shelter program for transitional age youth. In 2022, Nextmove has supported over 17,000 households and has provided over 600,000 direct services among their 11 different programs that they now operate. Therefore, it is my great pleasure to introduce to you all the Nextmove team of all-stars that's going to share with you a little bit about the programs that are at DHA. Thank you.
Thank you, Alondra.
Next move.
All right, hi all, I'm Debbie Martinez, I'm the Executive Director for Nextmove, and we're really excited to share these programs with you, because they're very, we're close to our heart, so, it's great.
You're all color-themed, I see, you all have blue and black on.
We are, our Nextmove blue. All right, our first, first program is the Mather Family Transitional Housing Program. This is Gary Alexander, he is the Program Manager for that location. This is a nine-to-12-month transitional housing program for families, and we can support up to 25 non-congregate family units with, they have individual kitchens and bathrooms. The configuration, excuse me, the configuration can be changed slightly with how the buildings are designed to accommodate different family sizes and maximize the space. We partnership with WEAVE, which is a domestic violence organization, to provide the supportive services that include counseling, community connections, parenting, education, education support, case management, and housing location services. And I'll hand it over to Gary about, to give some program outcome data.
Thank you, Debbie, welcome, Gary.
Hi, good afternoon. I just wanted to point out that in the fiscal year of 21 through 2022, my program has served 40, 41 families, 22 of which are currently still with us, they've rolled over into the new fiscal year. We've exited 15 families successfully into permanent housing, and that represents a 79% success rate for our housing, for our team. Of the 15 families we've housed successfully, 84% of them have not engaged with any further homeless services at the six-month point from their exit. So our housing success and retention rate is very successful. Thank you. Yes, sir.
How is 15 of 41, 79%?
Because there's, of that 41 families served, 22 of them are still currently with the program, and they've rolled over into the new fiscal year. So they're still receiving services. We've exited 19 families total, 15 of which are in permanent housing of their own.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Gary?
All right, our next program is the Mather Single Adults Emergency Shelter Program, and this is Heather Cardoza, she's the Program Manager for that location. This is a 90-day emergency shelter program, so very quick turnaround. There are 140 units that are onsite, non-congregate, and 10 of those units can accommodate couples if needed. And Heather's going to talk to you a little bit more about the services that are offered at that program.
Great. Good afternoon, Heather.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us, I'm very excited to be here. So as you said, my name is Heather, and the services that we include is individual unit sheltering, we offer 24/7 onsite staffing, case management, employment referrals, public benefit connections, behavioral health services, alcohol and drug recovery support, and services connection, and housing locating services, including the ready-to-rank curriculum offered to assist, assist the client's success. So with our ready-to-rank curriculum, we're focusing on addressing common barriers to housing success. We address income stability, securing vital documents, background checks, and expungement credit report, working with landlords for evictions, and basic life skills.
Thank you, Heather.
Thanks, Heather.
All right, some of our program outcome data, during the last fiscal year, we served 337 participants. 121 of those participants have successfully exited, some of them rolled over into the new fiscal year as well. That gives us a 61% success rate, which is great, and our housing retention rate is 84% within the six months after they're leaving the program.
Before you leave that slide, I just wanted to say, I know that Supervisor Desmond and I first had a chance to meet Heather when we went up on one of the roofs that had been pretty severely damaged during the storm. I don't know that was OSHA-approved, but we went up there anyway, so. And, and again, I want to thank certainly Dave Villalueva, Jeff Gasoway, and others, again, working with Nextmove. Heather had had to, you know, along with other program responsible parties to, because we had some heating issues as well, and so about space heaters, plus we'd had some water intrusion, but I know that our team, and again, thanks to the folks I mentioned, is working with Nextmove to get the units back in repair, to fix the boiler, which at that time was down, and so as I say, we were having to heat individual units, but I know we've made some progress, thank you, Ann, for you, you and your staff. I know we, it was your first year as county exec, and bought some, you know, items for this board to approve, to get some of those badly needed repairs funded that year and then accomplished. And so, again, credit certainly to Nextmove, but to our county staff for their, their good work, and again, I just wanted to note that today, so, thanks.
Thank you. All right, we have next the Adolfo Transitional Housing Program. This is Mona Lisa Santos, and she's the Program Manager for this location.
Good afternoon, Mona Lisa.
Hello.
All right, Adolfo is a transitional housing program for former foster youth ages 18 to 24, also known as TAE or Transitional Age Youth, who've exited from state foster care and can benefit from ongoing supportive services, and these services can be offered up to three years. This is a collaboration between the Department of Human Assistance, Department of Children, Family and Adult Services, and Nextmove to provide the support and operate the TAE program. We can serve up to 46 households, depending on family size, at this location, and also up to 30 additional scattered site locations. These are apartment, just regular apartments with direct lease with the participant, where they provide, we provide the rental subsidy as well as supportive services, ones that are a little more independent. And then Mona is going to talk about the additional services that we offer at this location.
Great.
The services we provide are case management services, housing locating services, education and employment services, mental health services, alcohol and drug recovery support connections, and financial rental assistance. Adolfo emphasis on education and employment. With the participants being 18 to 25, this is the opportunity for them to obtain their high school diploma, certificates, degrees, and/or masters. The staff assists the participants with finding their educational goals, sign up for school and classes, financial aid, and connects them with programs that further their education. During their three-year stay, we assist them with employment goals as well. Staff does outreach to employers that are hiring in the Sacramento area, advocates for our youth, and enlightens employers about our program. Staff reports, staff supports participants with their resume building, mock interviews, interview clothes, and transports them as well.
Great, thanks, Mona.
All right, some program outcome data, we served 93 households in the last fiscal year. Of those 93, 30 have successfully exited into permanent stable housing, and some rolled over, since it is a much longer program. That's a 69% success rate, and of the 30 that successfully exited the program, only two engaged in homeless services within the first six months after leaving. All right, and this is a fun picture, we have an annual Halloween trunk-or-treat event for the families at the family shelter, and it's a lot of fun, you know, safe place for the kids to trick-or-treat and show off their great costumes. We do have, finally, a testimonial video for you, if not sure how to click the link. Oh, okay, perfect, all right.
Today here at Mather, I graduated the program. I'm from inner-city, gang violence, drugs. When you allow that to dictate your life, then there comes jail, institutions, prisons, and then you're just back and forth, back and forth.
At 41, pregnant, struggling with drug abuse, with a two-year-old fleeing a severely domestic violence relationship with nothing. I'm now graduating from the Mather Campus, I have an apartment, I have a job, I am nine months clean and sober, I have two beautiful children, and without this program, I have no idea where me and my family would be.
Well, what's happening today is I'm graduating the Nextmove program, and I'm moving into my own place.
Yeah, I did come from prison, and, you know, when I got out, I lost my kids. I graduated, I'm getting my certificate today. I graduated, I'm getting my certificate today. I'm moving into a place. I got a job. They helped me with that.
If I didn't find Next Move, I'd probably be in the penitentiary right now. It was my privilege to be here. You have to be determined and focused. Stick with the game plan, and you'll graduate too. Thank you, Next Move.
I felt like a newborn baby. I didn't have to worry about eating. I had a place to sleep, you know, and I could, I could focus on when I needed something or when I wanted something. I knew where to go to get it. Mainly what I needed was a lot of advice and support, and I got that. It was overwhelming. It's excellent.
You know, I just prayed to God every day and talked to my kids, and they was my support system to really stay here and do what I need to do, because they want to come home.
I knew that I needed to get some help, and I knew that I needed to get recovery. My experience here and the staff here have been absolutely incredible.
The main thing about homelessness that people don't know enough about is not everybody out there is on drugs. There's a lot of mental health out there, and a lot of people don't want to be out there, they just don't know where to go to get home.
I'm doing traffic. I'm out in the streets. I see, I see it. There's, we need to boost up our mental health awareness. That's big.
I spend the last, well, 40 years in institutions, prisons, and jails, and, yeah, so you get out here and you're kind of lost, you know? I don't know anybody that stays out in the street and just all of a sudden gets a job, and I haven't met any of them. You know, this is good, structured to, you know, set, made to be, you know?
And I highly recommend this place. You know, I came here on a CPS to help get a, a place for me and my daughter, so I was successful at getting this apartment. My son, my obstacle was my bad decisions. You know, I was a drug dealer. You know, now I work nine-to-five. I gotta worry about nobody looking for me, nobody robbing me, the police, none of that, you know? I had to make that change so I could grow.
We've all been treated equally, and even they got to keep my dog. And I'm, just want to say again that everybody here's been really good to me, so I recommend this place to more people.
Everybody here was blessing, you know? They helped me along my way. I got housing, I got bed every day.
Just getting my apartment, I'm getting my license back soon. They helped me pay my DUI classes off. They, I mean, there's so much to, to be thankful for.
I came on a Wednesday, I came back Wednesday, and, and a month later, I moved in. We are hours away from leaving this location, heading to a room in a house off of 38th Avenue, ready to move on with the next chapter.
I was able to go to school, get my phlebotomy certificate. I hope that Sacramento County can continue to help people like me.
You know, all of us that are, that come here are, come from different demographics, different reasons. Most of us all just need a little bit of time for a restart.
I had everything, you know? I gave up my family, my kids, the boat, the job, the car, the house, you know, and, and lived in a park. My experience is drug addiction, you know, alcoholism. There's, I mean, it's rampant. If you truly want to change your life, this is the place to do it, because they, they're about the business of helping you.
Thank you all for letting us share a little bit, and I hope you enjoy the tour.
Great. Thanks, Debbie. Let me just say, any board members have any questions of some of the presenters here? We're going to get a chance to be out in the field with you, so, yeah.
Just a quick question. Thank you. This is wonderful, and I look forward to the tour again. And do most of the folks there, they were graduating from the, I imagine, the family program?
It's a mixture of the family and the singles program.
Okay. Do, do a lot of the, the folks who end up in the family program, do they transition from the emergency shelter program and then go into?
So the, the singles program is only for adults, so we, there is another, there are emergency family shelters, and they typically transition from the emergency family. That's just to get them off of the street and then move them into the transitional housing as there's availability.
And the participants in the program, was, was that a condition of staying in, in the program itself, that they had to go through these classes to get that certificate, or?
Heather, do you want to take that?
So yes, and, and our contract, it says that we have to do a ready-to-rank curriculum, so it is part of one of the requirements. But it's the best requirement because it really eliminates all the barriers from credit, evictions, backgrounds, convictions, things like that. So to answer your question, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Phil.
Very impressive, first of all, and very encouraging. I'm curious to know, many of the folks that were featured in the video freely referenced their, their past addiction or the fact that they're working on their sobriety. In your experience, what do you know about their past in terms of substance abuse, especially the type of substances that they're addicted to? Is it alcohol? Is it methamphetamine? Is it opioids? All the above?
I'd say all of the above. Yeah, it's different for each person.
Sue.
This is actually probably for Siobhan. You know, we've got it broken down by program by program and all of that, and facilities. Can we get an aggregate of everything that we're doing with homelessness on the Mather campus?
An aggregate beyond what is broken down here?
Yeah, just, just, so I can simply tell when people say, and we get this all the time, I'm sure all five of us do, you know, why aren't you doing anything at Mather, you know? And if I could just throw out a number, well, actually, we are, we're serving X, you know?
Total number? Yeah, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
You can total these up. It's, it's well over 450, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
On any given, given night between the programs, it approaches 500. Depending upon family size and so forth, because I-
Including VOA?
Yes.
No, it doesn't include- That's what I want to know, everything.
Right, exactly. So we're hearing from Next Move that runs the singles, the families, the rights, but we also have the VOA that runs the substance use programs, but I'll get you a total, but I, yes, that's about right.
And Nation's fine, that runs the veterans. You've got 100 permanent supportive units, and you have 50 transitional beds there. So I think, again, it's well over 500, probably approaching 600, Patrick, because I get asked the same thing, and I know that Ethan was very helpful and actually provided that information. I don't know if it got circulated to the board in understandable fashion, because I used to either not count or double count depending upon what I was understanding of. So, but I think that's an important number, because I think to, to your point, you know, we can talk about this. I say to folks that the community campus with all of its elements, including Veterans Village, is the largest single location for folks that either were homeless or formerly homeless and, and going through the various elements of programs right here at Mather. And, you know, I don't think there's any-
I don't think there's any awareness on the public's, you know, mind about how extensive it is.
I think you're, I think you're probably right about that. And the Transitional Age Youth, I mean, you've got, you know, you, you know, there's scattered throughout. Next Move provides services beyond the campus, but to have that single location, and I think as you'll see today, and this is part of the reason for the tour and what Siobhan introduced, is that to look at, on this 30-plus acres, what we can do, you know, differently and/or, you know, we, we work around the configuration of the old propeller buildings and what's in place, but the opportunity to, yes, to have the programmatic element to support it, but what we could do to actually potentially grow that in, in number and certainly in program impact to the, to the folks. So I think there's some, I, I for one think there's an opportunity to do some more here, but it's going to require obviously some capital investment and programmatic support behind that, so, good point, though.
Hey, Don?
Yeah.
So all of what you showed us, it spoke to, it's all transitional, correct?
No, there are two transitional housing and one emergency shelter. So the, the singles program is emergency, but the other, the family program and the TAE program are both transitional.
So once you have a graduate that goes through the program that's in transitional housing, some said in the video that they went on to get their own apartment, but is there a history working with permanent supportive housing programs around the region where they progressed to that first before they go out on their own and rent an apartment?
Yes. So if permanent supportive housing is the more appropriate route for that individual, they would be referred to one of those programs.
And what, what are some of the criteria that you use to make that determination?
Their barriers, just what their income situation looks like, you know, if, if they're only getting social security based on age, age is another important, health, all of those, you know, chronicity for homelessness, it all goes into that.
And mental health. Often, we wrap around the full-service partnerships, the FSPs, into permanent supportive housing, so folks will have that behavioral health care in an ongoing way as well.
Sue.
I wanted to ask, you mentioned that you offer some extended services like expungement and so forth. Do you outsource that, or do you work on that directly, and is that a long, a tedious process?
That is outsourced, yes.
Okay. And also, I, I don't know, I was wondering, who does the senior, were there some, some senior housing on Mather?
There's the veterans' housing, but not senior-specific housing.
We don't have any senior-specific.
But seniors would be allowed into the, the programs that are there, but it's not a senior-specific program.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. It was for your work. It's wonderful presentation.
Yeah. Just, yeah, thank you, Debbie and, and the presenters, but I guess I'm curious, because I know that previously, and of course with COVID, it became a little more restrictive, but when you had graduations, and sometimes they were, you know, in larger bunches, I know people graduate throughout the course of any given year. I would just say that for my colleagues and for, you know, other county staff, you know, get a chance to see this, but I know I had the chance over many years, you know, a different program operator, but where they had more formal graduations, even people had left the program, and it was a chance to hear those testimonials and to see how people had just, you know, made dramatic changes with the support that they received from, you know, you folks and others. And I just think that's good, you know, if you could continue that, I don't know, you know, again, I know they're in COVID, you probably weren't doing those, but if you, even if it's just a ceremony with, with a few folks, it's important. And again, you know, board members, as they have time available and so forth, because it gives you that insight into what we're doing here. And I think, back to Patrick's point about, you know, the more we know about it, the better we're able to, in the various forms in which we, you know, have contact with our colleagues at different levels within, you know, within the framework of, of representation in the community, but also it helps to, I think, really tell the story, because we see those personal vignettes and get a chance to, you know, to recite what we know goes on at Mather, because, one, we obviously, you know, provide the program support, and we get, you know, different times where you touch base with us. But I would just say that for future reference, that it would be, I would, you know, encourage you to invite board members and, and certainly senior county staff and other partners to be a part of that graduation, so they can actually, they'll get a chance to meet those folks. I, I can tell you, and I'll just be real brief here, on a couple occasions, but I remember a few years ago, I was actually out in Citrus Heights, I'd gone to in a bed in Folsom and came back through one evening, I was stopped at a store, and gentleman and, and, and his wife came up to me and said, aren't you Don and Tony? I said, yes. And they said, well, you were at my graduation. And I said, and then, you know, we're a little older, and I said, they said, at Mather Community Campus, they recalled that I'd been there, but I, and then one of them, it actually was a guest speaker, one of the speakers, and I remembered her telling the story about the two of them, and they were, you know, you know, struggling, and here they were, they had their own apartment, they were, they were both employed. And again, it's just further testimonial to what we saw here. So again, Debbie, I just encourage you, keep that in the forefront. I mean, you go about it quietly, but I think one of the things we as board members struggle at times is to be able to help tell that story, you know, and, and we're good voices for that, given the knowledge of it. So I just would, I think, again, to Patrick's question, it'd be good for us to know the numbers, but also we can, you know, reflect, you know, on a very personal level without sharing people's names and so forth, what goes on here at the campus.
Thank you.
Yeah, Phil?
Any patterns or common denominators in terms of where folks are coming from, if they were immediately in emergency sheltering or coming off the streets, whether it's the city of Sacramento, or Carmichael, or Folsom? I mean, what, what do you know about where these folks had been living?
I don't have that information right now, but we could definitely get it to you.
That'd be good, at least for me, I like to understand that a little bit better.
Yeah, those zip codes, I think DUI zip code would give you a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Follow up on that, because, yeah, I was thinking the same thing in light of discussions we're having, but also with the, 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 the folks suffering from addiction, you know, a lot of, big challenge we all have in our districts is, is, is folks who've been offered services and they don't take them. What elements of your program do you think have, have made it more attractive for people to maybe, you know, rethink their resistance to going into something? I mean, what, what was it that enticed them or made it something that they would accept?
I would have to say probably word of mouth. I think people realize, you know, I, you know, the individuals were successful at these programs, maybe I should give them, you know, a try. And then I know, you know, at the beginning, when, when COVID first started, that did incentivize people to come in to shelter because just what was going on in the community and the world, so.
That's helpful, because we do hear that, there's a lack of trust out there, is that if I take advantage of this program, it's going to be, you know, a congregate shelter that's going to be chaotic and maybe violent, you know, all these, these elements that certainly you don't have here at Mather Community Campus. So, okay, thank you.
If I could, just one other question. The proximity to other service provision, I mean, I know for years we worked to get public transit, transit services to, to Mather, and obviously that's all, with light rail station proximity and so forth, helps for people that are, you know, moving in and about, but I guess, you know, it was mentioned that we have, you know, county poverty and human assistance folks, we have, you know, the Veteran Service Center, you know, just down, you know, right across the way. You've got a VOA, obviously Next Move. How does that help with the program, so people don't necessarily have to go too far away to, you know, take, you know, partake in those services? And SETA has their, you know, career training, you know, aspect there. So that co-locating, where you've got this, you know, kind of synergy of, of services and service providers, does, do you think that, you know, kind of back to some of the other questions about how you get people who may have an addiction, but having those services proximity versus having to, you know, either have someone come in, I'm sure you have professionals come in, but having to send somebody, you know, away to get that, it's right there, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a few steps away, so. How does that factor in, do you think, Debbie?
Alana, do you want to take this?
Alana will take it. Hi, yes. It's a great, it's very important to make sure that we do have access to those resources right on hand, because every individual is unique, and their open window, so to speak, is different for everyone. And so being able to capitalize on the resources that are there when that individual is in that openness and willingness to be able to access that is super crucial. As we all know, with behavioral health and with addiction, there has to be the right place in the right time, and that individual has to be in that mentality and be ready to accept that service. Sometimes we have that luck and we catch them at the right moment, and we were providing that service right off the hand. Other times, we're not, and that's okay, and we have to recognize that. We have to go based on individual's timeline and when they are ready. And that connection to those resources like SETA, like having the clinical staff onboard, having VOA onboard to support families outside of just those experiencing homelessness, having the seniors for the veterans, all of those working collaboratively together reinforces the opportunity for when that open mindset is available.
One final question. So the, we have a, a SETA Head Start Center right across the street as well, just north of the Transitional Age Youth. How has that benefited? That was one of the very first connections that was made out here when, when we were looking at converting the base, and SETA stepped up, and we've had that Head Start Center out there for well over 25 years. Does that help with young people who are part of those family structures, and obviously if they're school age, beyond that, they would, you know, go to, to local schools? But how, how does that help support the families?
So for the Transitional Age Youth program, SETA does have a subset of group that works specifically with the TAE population that we have, and they have specific resources allocated to support them in their progress, given it's a three-year program. And currently, we are in active conversations with SETA of how their program and our program can work together in the singles, because we are a 90-day shelter, and so the timeline that we have now is limited, but the progress that has been done in the, in the short program tracks that they have made available to our population has been indispensable. One of the individuals that you were able to hear received their phlebotomy certificate through this collaborative effort.
Maybe you misunderstood. I was asking about the fact that you have a Head Start Center for the youngsters-
Oh, I'm sorry. Head Start.
Yeah, adjacent, and for families that are here, does that, how does that connection, does it, do you have families that have their young people enrolled in the Head Start program while they either are, you know, gaining employment or seeking other services? I'm just curious, because you've got, you know, non-school age children that are on the campus with their families, and are they enrolled in the Head Start program?
Apologies, I thought you meant the SETA program.
No, I know, I jumped on you.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and have Gary answer that. That's his program.
Okay, great.
Yes, we have had people enroll their children in Head Start in the past.
Yes, we have had people enroll their children in Head Start in the past. It's largely dependent on openings and what's available at that time. As you can imagine, it's pretty backlogged, but when it is available, we take advantage of it.
Well, I'm just saying, I know Patrick and I have served on the SETA Board, that we have Head Start slots, again, you have capacity with certain facilities. But if there's an oversubscription for Head Start slots there, that would be something, I think, the SETA Board, certainly our director at SETA for the Head Start programs would want to know that. Because again, we do allocate or reallocate slots based upon, you know, community need and certainly the availability of the space to conduct that. So again, if you're finding that it's oversubscribed for families that would want to enroll their young people in the Head Start, again, that's the connectivity, I think, that Gary wouldn't just be dependent upon you, but that, you know, reaching out, either through DHA, or certainly through, you have two members, board supervisors, sit on the SETA Board and have, since its inception, it would be a good way to know, because there is the ability. And sometimes we go, you know, looking for more enrollees, just because of, you know, demographics that change over time. So if you're seeing that consistently, we want to work on that and help you, you know, make sure there are slots available for supporting young people.
Yeah, we'll certainly take advantage of that, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Great, okay. All right, anything else for our Nextmove folks, or for DHA? So, all right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anne, so we're going to want to tour, was somebody going to go through the map real quickly? We've all got maps in hand, and maybe somebody could take the board and kind of just describe very quickly.
So maybe Flo can first, oh, I'm sorry, announce the next item? Because it's just, it is formal.
Yeah, our next item, number four, is the Mather Community Campus Tour by Nextmove's Homeless Services.
So there's been a map that was distributed to you, oh, Lisa, did you want to talk?
I was, Flo reminded me to remind the board that we are in session when we're on our tour. So the topic of discussion should remain of the Mather.
Mather.
The Mather and what is agendized.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Ms. Travis. So you do have a map in front of you, and I also want to take a moment to thank General Services, both Jeff Gassaway and Natasha Drain, because they spent a lot of time and effort arranging our transportation, the bus that's going to take us. And you will have a map in hand, and I'm not sure who's actually narrating us through the tour. You, okay, excellent.
So Alana, I think, before we break out of session, maybe just getting there, people maybe tuned into this, or this will be taped. If you just run through that map real quickly, and just, it was up on the screen a moment ago, and just show us where we're going. But also, it goes to one of the questions asked, kind of where those program elements are. So if you just do it real quickly, so.
Sure, okay. So the map that I presented to you all today is an updated version of the one we had prior, which really paints the picture of the collaborative approach that we have on the Mather campus. This has not only the DHA programs that you just heard about today, but it also has the programs that VOA or Volunteers of America, and that the Department of Health Services also has in collaboration to serving those experiencing homelessness. And so what you're going to be able to experience today is a tour that highlights the main areas where DHA has their programming, which we take about two-thirds of the actual campus building. And so in the front here, as if you have it on your, in your area, this is a lot of the administration buildings that both Volunteers of America and SETA, Job Club, and Mather, Nextmove, I'm sorry, have their admin buildings to support the actual programming that's going on on the other buildings. And so we will be meeting in Sheera Avenue, and then we're going to be walking the campus and be able to look at one of the single shelters units. So he has an opportunity for you to be able to see what type of conditions those buildings are, as well as the amenities that we offer for that shelter. So we're going to walk in this area and be able to highlight the different programs. And so on the first propeller building, you are able to see the singles shelter program, and also the VOA Grant Per diem program. So one of the propellers, we do share collaboration with Volunteers of America with their own separate program. And the second propeller up here on, where it says 3584 Frame Warrior, that is solely purpose for the Mather families, Transitional Shelter Program, that Gary was able to present. And we are able to serve up to 25 families here, as well as have some administrative staff onsite at that location to be able to be there if there's any need for support. The following propeller building, that is a collaborative effort between DHS and Volunteers of America. They do have an Options for Recovery. This is the Women and Family Section, so they do have two separate programs that use this propeller to serve individuals and families that are in need as it relates specifically to recovery. And we have back here, the, one of the main propeller buildings that houses all of the MCC Singles or Mather Singles Emergency Shelter Program. So it has 90 of the 140 units that we use to shelter single individuals in the shelter program. And in the middle of all of this, we have the Mather Community Campus Kitchen Area, which you will be able to see today, that is being used to provide the meal services for the programs that we have available. And I know someone had asked about the veterans' program, or, I'm sorry, the seniors' program. And so that is located, right near this dirt path area, which you will see when we first enter the tour location. There is a Veterans Village that really stands out compared to the rest of those buildings, and that is where the permanent supportive housing and Transitional Shelter Programs are being offered for veterans specifically under Mercy Housing and under Nation's Finest.
Okay, very good, thanks. Yeah, Patrick?
I just, just so I can understand what these numbers mean. You have here at the very top, 90 of 140 units, emergency shelter. Then over further down, you have 50 of 140. Those are 50 out of 140 units, why don't we, why don't we have 140?
So we, excuse me, we do have 140, the 90 and the 50 equal the 140 units. Unfortunately, because of the structures that are placed there, we had to split the Mather Singles Units into two separate buildings, but we're trying to maximize the capacity that we can have.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, any other questions about, and then across the street, that last propeller building is the Transitional Age Youth.
Yes, that is the lovely building that we got to aesthetically paint recently, within this last couple of fiscal years. And it's separate from the rest of them, given the program's design and intentionality around making sure that those Transitional Age Youth and their families have the space that they need for up to three years, because in a sense, that's their home.
And real quickly, while you have the map, the last thing is that across from Veterans Village to, it'd be to, if you're looking at the map, to the left, and then to downside of the page are the two sites that are currently amongst those that are being discussed with the city of Rancho Dova for transfer, and looking at additional housing on either one or both of those sites, but particularly the one on the south side, adjacent to the administrative, the Quonset Huts there. That's what the Veterans Village expansion, so. All right, well, thank you very much for your presentation, we appreciate it. You did a great job, we hope to see you back before the board and in time to come, so. All right, any other, Anne, you want to go over any other details?
I suggest we take a three-minute bio-break, and then go to the buses.
Okay, all right, and again, thanks to those. RT is providing the transportation.
Is security going to stay here, so we can leave our things? Yes?
Yeah, one security will be with us, and the rest will stay.
And one will be here, okay.
Okay, so we're going to continue on with the meeting, so we're still, we're going to take a bio-break, get on the buses, and reassemble over the campus. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order, and with a big thanks to all of our tour guides, and to Alana and others who gave us the tour of the campus. And before we jump in, though, we need to call a roll, we never went out of quorum, but just to reestablish it for the record, so, Flo, call it again.
Okay, Serna?
Here.
Kennedy? Desmond?
Here.
Natalie?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, thanks. All right, with that, we return to Anne, and if there's any observations or comments board members want to make about what you saw, and kind of, you know, where we are with anything, now's the time, and then we'll go from there.
Sure, thank you. Just a few comments. Thank you, Siobhan and Ethan, for arranging the tour. I think that was really, really helpful. Lots of really good things happening at Mather Community Campus. And early next year, we'll be bringing a master plan, essentially, and looking at what other things might we do at Mather Community Campus. So we're very excited about that, excited about the good work that's happening there, and open to your comments.
Yeah, sure.
Anne, in terms of future additions to the campus, is that both programmatic and capital facilities?
Potentially.
Okay, because one of my takeaways is that there's an awful lot of space.
Yes.
Whether it's empty parking lots, or, and I appreciate what some said about, you know, having open space available for folks to decompress, or what have you. But just kind of occurred to me immediately that there's just a lot of open areas that might be better utilized.
I had the same thought, and I actually asked Leah as we were walking back, are the, these parking lots are empty? Because I was thinking exactly the same thing. I said, "Are they ever full?" And she says, "Well, they're often full, because they have many participants, at least in the family program that do work." She said, "They're less full in the singles area, but I do think there's opportunities."
Good, other board members, any questions, comments?
Siobhan would like to.
Yeah, Siobhan, go ahead.
And I was just going to add, you know, Jeff's team at DGS has been sort of penciling out some concepts as we're building sort of the programmatic aspect of what we can do. And there's also opportunities to build up, so build up and then also fill in some of that space. So we're looking at everything.
Yeah, I just concur, I mean, that's been part of, obviously, board members have heard and so have staff, that, you know, there are opportunities to, you know, grow in a smart way, and to, I think, you know, build upon the strong foundations there, both on the physical plant, but also with the programmatic part of it. And, you know, I was hopeful the master plan would get to us sooner, but nonetheless, I think it'll be well-thought-out. And I think today was certainly a good opportunity for all of us. And again, thanks to everybody who put it together to get a chance to see firsthand. But I think also, as you were describing, Phil, and I'm sure others as well, thinking about, you know, what might be, and, you know, what's there. And I know I've talked with staff, I mean, David and I talked a little bit, Vella, Wave and I, as we're going through, that, you know, certainly our curb appeal, but also then the improvements that would, you know, I think, really make a good statement there, because we are, you know, right at the, you know, almost to the gateway of the, you know, Mather, you know, Commerce Center, and, you know, there's a lot of good things going on. And I think one other thing I would just note, you know, we've talked about this with regards to what the county is doing to, you know, you know, serve the unhoused, but also our behavioral health and our, you know, Drug and Alcohol Recovery Services and so forth. But I think Mather needs to be a part of that story. To Patrick's question before we took the break, is that make sure that we're clear about what it is we're doing to serve people, and have been for, you know, well over 25 years now. And so I just think that that's a real key piece, and hopefully, you know, the investments that'll be called upon, as you just responded, Anne, to Phil's question. I think that, you know, we have a good idea now, you know, what's there. And, you know, and I think as you vision of what it can be, there's a lot of potential. So I just thank our folks for the good work. And I want to acknowledge Troy, too. Troy's been on front lines over the years relative to property disposition, McKinnyac, and I know Council's Office has assisted with that, too, Lisa, you and your colleagues, as we try to work through different aspects. And I think there's a lot of potential, both on the campus, but also right adjacent to with some of the properties there. Yeah, Sue, Jim?
I was going to say, the thing that kind of resonates with me is that it's already a campus, and it's all set up, and there's not a lot of controversy around what's here. So adding to it would be so easy. It seems like a great opportunity for, great potential for more, I don't know what. Good stuff.
Yeah, the community has embraced it, and I just would say that we were physically with the campus in the city of Rancho Dova, so I would just put that out there, too. As, you know, the board and county proceeds forward, we need to make sure that our city partners are, you know, well-apprised, and that they're, you know, you know, brought into that discussion, because again, it is within the city's jurisdiction as related to the land use piece of that. And we may have some exclusions, because we're, you know, a county property. But again, there's a good relationship with the community and a good relationship with the city leaders as well, so, very good. I was going to note, too, that our Veterans Commission actually meets in one of those, you know, buildings that we were adjacent to, we didn't walk right past it, but it was one of those that was in the rear portion there. So, and again, I know surprise Frost had a hand in, you know, bringing that forward, and maybe an opportunity at some point to have our commissioners, Veterans Commissioners, actually come to the board to give a report on their activities over the last couple of years, too. Okay, any other observations, board members? All right, any other staff want to weigh in? Again, thank you all for coordinating, right down to the, you know, bus trip, and certainly to the folks, and the chocolate chip cookies were wonderful, so, very good.
So we're not done yet. Flo, can you please call the next item?
Is that item six?
Item five.
Item five, recognizing Supervisor Don Natoli of the 5th Supervisory District for his service, our chairperson, Don Natoli.
So, Don, we gave a lot of thought to, we really wanted to do something to recognize and honor you, and we know you wouldn't want a gift. So what we did instead, to really honor you for your many years of service and your leadership and your compassion for really all that we do at the county, so we have made you a video.
So before I started working at the county, I had a job where I was doing governmental affairs for a local building group, and I had an issue coming before the Board of Supervisors, and I realized, I don't know any of these supervisors, I need to go out and meet them and talk about this issue. So I decided to cold-call Don Natoli's office. It was pretty close to 5:00 PM, I wasn't very confident that anybody would pick up the phone, but one of his staffers picks up the phone. And so I mentioned who I am and what I need to meet with him about, and wondering if he has any time on his schedule. And immediately, the staffer says, "Yeah, next week at 2:00 PM on Wednesday works." And I was kind of shocked, he doesn't know me, why would he accept a meeting? And I say, "Are you sure that that's going to work? Do you want to verify with the supervisor that he wants to meet with me?" And he says, "No, I'm Don Natoli, I'm happy to meet with you, that works for me." And to this day, I remain shocked, because I've worked for a lot of elected officials, and I've never worked for one that would ever be so down-to-earth to actually pick up the general phone line. And it just shows a lot about Don Natoli's character and who he is, that he's that in touch with the people.
Supervisor Natoli, so sad to see you go, but I'm very happy that you're retiring. I have known you forever, since I worked for John Lambeth, and it has been great working with you at the Board of Supervisors. We are going to miss seeing you carry your briefcase, which is just a box, around the office. And we're going to miss chasing after you to feed you lunch, so please eat lunch in your retirement, because we'll worry about you. And I hope you have a great, great chance to travel and to do wonderful things in your retirement with Brenda. Congratulations.
Hi Supervisor Natoli, like most people who grew up in Elk Grove, I've known you since I was very little. Really appreciate everything you've done for the community. Personally, you came to my Eagle Scout Ceremony, met with me, were the first person to introduce me to Supervisor Kennedy, and I've always appreciated that as well. But just wanted to say, congratulations, hope you enjoy the retirement. We'll have a lot more candy on the floor, which will be nice, but we'll definitely miss you. So congratulations and enjoy it.
Hi, Mr. Natoli, just wanted to tell you what an honor it's been to work with you for the last 13 years. Enjoy your retirement, my friend, you're going to be missed.
Congratulations, Mr. Natoli, on reaching a new life milestone. Don't think about work too much, and you can always call and make public comments.
Hi, Don, it is hard to believe that you won't be with us next year. Although I'm quite sad that you're leaving, I'm really happy for you. After your very long and successful career, you and Brenda deserve some time for yourself and to do things that you really enjoy together. I've been working with you for over 15 years quite closely, and the thing that I admire most about you is your compassion for others. You truly have a remarkable sense of compassion for all, and that is demonstrated in all that you do. And frankly, I think that will be your legacy, so I'm very, very proud of that for you. It's really been, really been great. So regardless of which position I have been in the county, and there have been many, you have always taken my call, taken a meeting, listened intently, and really weighed pros and cons. Now, we haven't always agreed, and that's okay, but you always have listened and really been thoughtful about where you go from there. And I've greatly appreciated that over the years. I am excited for you. We are going to have to find someone to pick up the mantle for things like Mather Community Campus, animal care, the Delta Tunnels, vernal pools, just to name a few, because you have been so dedicated to all of those issues and many, many more. I wish you well, we will all miss you. It will not be the same without you, and I hope that you have a wonderful and happy retirement.
Hello Supervisor Natoli, just first off, want to say congratulations on your retirement. It's well-deserved. And when I volunteered to do this clip, I started thinking about when the first time I met- when the first time I met you or saw you was. And that was in Nevada County back in the day. And you were there to wish Nate Beeson a farewell on his retirement. And you actually stood up and surprisingly spoke. And at that time, I didn't know you or know of you, but I thought, I had this impression that you were very kind and thoughtful. And that stuck with me. And at the time, I didn't know that I was coming to Sacramento County. And when I did, and I got to know you, I realized that my first impression of you was very accurate. I've enjoyed working with you. I've enjoyed getting to know you. You've been very accessible. You are a huge supporter of Ag, which I appreciate. You've been a big supporter of your constituents, but you're also very pragmatic. I feel like you just have, you've been a great voice for Sacramento County in general and the region. You're a dedicated public servant. You're credible. You're respectful. You're respected. And I just, I feel like with you leaving us, there will be very large shoes to fill. And we're all going to miss you, myself especially. And with that, I just want to thank you again and let you know that it's been a great pleasure working with you. Thank you.
I think Don Natoli is the quintessential people supervisor. I think he knows every single person in his district. I know he cares about every single person in the county. He's interested in what issues they have, and he wants to do everything he can to help them. I've always been struck by how well Supervisor Natoli knows Mather and Executive and Franklin Field and International Airports. In particular, at Mather, he knows all the building numbers that I don't even know. And he's familiar with the condition, who the tenants are. He just knows it all. And he's been a great resource as I've gotten up to speed over the last four years as Airport Director. And he has been a tremendous resource as we tackle various issues that we face together.
Supervisor Natoli, I'd like to thank you for all of your years of service, for all of your support to the Clerk's Office, and personally, for all your kindness that you've shown me since I've been in the Clerk's Office. I'd like to wish you a happy, loving, and healthy retirement. Congratulations.
Congratulations Supervisor Natoli on your retirement. You are absolutely an institution for this organization and just a remarkable person overall. There's lots to admire about you, but two things that really stick out in my mind are, first, the tireless work that you've done on behalf of the animals in Sacramento County. Thank you very much for that. Second is your photographic razor-sharp memory. If you ever bottle what gives you that memory, I will be first in line to buy that. I'm sure a very long line. But in all seriousness, you've served the people of Sacramento County for more than 40 years. And now with your retirement, now's the time for you to really be able to spend the time that you want with friends and family. You deserve to do whatever you want to do with this next chapter of your life. So with that Supervisor Natoli, congratulations on your retirement. Enjoy your retirement to the fullest, and thank you for everything you've done. And we'll never forget you.
On behalf of the entire office of the Sacramento County Council, we would like to congratulate you on your many, many years of dedicated service to Sacramento County as a member of the Board of Supervisors. To say that you have witnessed a lot of change in these past decades is a massive understatement. I believe that you've worked with every single county council ever to serve Sacramento County. For the past 25 years, I've had the privilege and honor of working with you on many, many topics, including Point Pleasant, the Sacramento Raceway, the Town of Locke, the Delta, and many other exciting and controversial items. The thing about you, Don, is that you've always approached everything with humility and kindness. So even though you were always the most knowledgeable person in the room, no one ever minded that. We always appreciated your thoughtfulness and anything that you had to offer to solve the problems that we were facing. Obviously, you are irreplaceable. You will be missed, but we congratulate you again and will wish you all the best in retirement.
Well, hello, Don. And I am just thrilled to participate in this video tribute program effort for you. You know, so many thoughts have been running around in my head about how much of a wonderful mentor and friend and supporter you have been of mine since I started. I obviously don't have nearly the tenure that, with you, that so many other people will be discussing on this video tribute. But just a few things I wanted to mention as, you know, the newest person on the Board of Supervisors from day one, pretty much, you took me under your wing and really helped show me around the place, helped, you were always willing to listen to my dumb questions about things and took the time to explain some of the intricacies and complexities of county budgeting and land use issues. And since I started, you've been someone that I know I could, I could go to to get some just really expert advice with better historical context than really anyone else could possibly provide. So I thank you for that, for your, just your technical assistance. And I thank you for your friendship. There are times where I have reached out to you when I've had some challenging situations in my district involving some folks in the community. And just your wisdom, your knowledge, your genuine compassion and concern. I tell you, it has really meant so much to me personally. And I consider you such a friend and just a wonderful, wonderful asset to this community and to this county for so many years. Now, we are going to miss you immensely. And I think the, your absence really will, will not be, will not be profoundly felt until we get into some very complex issues at the board. But I hope you don't mind if I take advantage of your offers to give you a call and ask for your advice as I try to navigate through some of these issues that we will be experiencing. And just want to finish with, thank you for your service, Don. I have grown up in Sacramento, Sacramento County, knowing your name, knowing your reputation. And what a wonderful reputation you have. You epitomize public service and the best things about public service. And I hope that I will just be able to, just a little bit, follow in your footsteps and take, take your example and provide, continue providing the very highest levels of service to the community as you have done for so many, so many years. So Godspeed in your retirement, my friend, and I hope we keep in touch. Thank you, Don.
Hi, Don. I'm excited to be here to wish you well on your retirement. I remember back so many memories over time since I've come to the county in 2017. I remember when I first got here, you were one of those people who greeted me warmly, said if you need me help. I always knew I could go to you for help. And I did from time to time. Since I had Rancho Marietta and you had represented Rancho Marietta in the past, I remember it was just incredible, the institutional knowledge that you have. You had known every bridge and every road, every person. And you knew where all the skeletons were buried. You might have even known where some of those old maps were. And you had all those records that you had saved in your office. So you had resources that you could go back to that would help us. And over time, I have so much appreciated your assistance with things that were important to me in my district. I remember when I was advocating for the Orangeville Library, and that was one of the things that I had promised in my campaign. I had promised Orangeville, they said, if we vote for you, will you deliver us a new library? And so in my first term, I wasn't able to accomplish it, but I did advocate over all those years. And in my, I remember toward the end of my first term or the beginning of my second, I met with you and pulled you aside, and you took some time with me in my office and helped me and the staff through the JPA agreements and the conversations with the library authority. And you were always on my side. You said, don't worry about it. We'll figure this out, you know? We'll figure out where we're going to get the money. And I really appreciated that, that the help that you gave me over time. You know, people have, a lot of times in meetings, people talk to us and they say, are you listening? Are you paying attention? We always knew that, Don, you were paying attention because even on public comment, you were up there taking notes as they're speaking and thinking very thoughtfully about what you're hearing. I really appreciate that you are a critical thinker and you're open-minded and willing to see all sides of the issue. And you're not just already decided when you get there. And I've appreciated your, your kind leadership. You're just one of the finest men that I know. You're just a kind soul. And I can see why your district loves you. I can see why all those years, most of the time, I'm pretty sure, I'm not even sure, you probably didn't even have anyone running against you. And I can see why, because they were really happy with your work. And so I'm going to miss you on the board, and I wish you weren't going. But I know I'm happy, you know, that you're going to have that opportunity to do some other things. And maybe, I know that honeydew list is probably going to be long, but hopefully you're going to do some fun things also. And hopefully, we'll see you around afterwards. And so thank you for your friendship and your, thank you for all your help. And wish you God's richest blessings in your retirement and in whatever you do moving forward. Thanks, Don. Bye.
Congratulations Supervisor Natoli on your retirement. You were the first person to greet me at the county when I came over first with Supervisor Peters. And you were so kind to welcome me to the floor. And I just want to say, I'm going to take up your box, because I love my papers. And I'm going to continue to use boxes, just like you do. Congratulations.
Supervisor Natoli, I'd like to thank you for always supporting the Clerk of the Board's Office, as well as lending support to the entire county and the staff. And I will really miss you dropping in in my office, and I wish you the best in your retirement.
Congratulations Supervisor Natoli. Thank you so much for your support over the years. Good luck on your retirement.
Supervisor Natoli, I wish you the very best on your retirement. I want to thank you for your years of service to the county, and we will miss you so much.
Mr. Natoli, you're going to be missed by all. A lot of history is going to be leaving with you. But you deserve retirement, and I wish you well in retirement.
So good luck in your retirement. We're going to miss you a lot in your current role. I'm convinced you're not going away, though. I'm sure we'll continue to interact with you and get to hear from you, gain from your wisdom. So all the best, and don't be a stranger.
Supervisor Natoli, you've been a part of our family folklore for quite some time. When I first started working for the county, we had an event at Jean Harvey. We were working on the Rose Garden. And you came and you presented and spoke to everyone who was there. And ever since that time, we just knew you are the embodiment of a public servant. And we've appreciated you and valued that part of you for so long. I want to say thank you for all the support that you've given me over the years, regional parks and the community of Sacramento. You're going to be very, very missed, but I wish you all the best in the future.
Don, I just want to tell you that it's been such an honor to be able to work with you. It's been so amazing to be able to pick your brain, to be able to have such a rich history that we can go off of working at the Board of Supervisors. And I wish you the best of luck in the future. And I have a sneaking suspicion that we're going to be seeing a lot more of you in the future, because I bet you're not going to be able to wait to be able to let us know your minds when an important issue comes. So I can't wait to keep talking to you.
Mr. Natoli, you've known me for a long time now, and we've worked very close together. And you're used to me writing scripts and preparing your notes and doing all of that stuff and trying to be perfect. But I wanted this one to be off the cuff and from my heart. You have been instrumental in my life and my professional development. You've helped me to become a better clerk, to be more compassionate, to be patient, and to be kind, to be understanding, and to be present. You have been there for me, and we've talked about my kids. We've talked about my life. You've embraced my kids. You remember their names. And you truly are the person who you show up to be every Tuesday and in the office. And oftentimes, we close down the office together too. And so we have a lot of fun on those nights, which seem to be a lot more than, more than none. And yes, I'm a little bit nervous because I want this to be so real and a true reflection of my heart. I try not to think about the fact that pretty soon, we're going to have our last meeting. And yes, sometimes the meetings are super long. And I'm like, could we please end public comments? But nonetheless, I'm going to miss our long meetings. I'm going to miss you being the chair. I'm going to miss the fact that you're always so comforting, especially when my nerves are really tied up, or I'm angsty about something. Or even when I'm just faced with conflict or a problem. You're really a nice sounding board, and you really look at things from your heart. It's been a pleasure to serve as the clerk and to be the assistant clerk, to be able to share the same office space with you and your staff. It's been nice to see us kind of get through the ups and the downs, and that you're really just an anchor. You're an anchor to the county. You're an anchor to the board. And you truly are an anchor for me, as far as someone that I admire and that I respect as a leader. And so I'm just going to say, so long. I know that I'll see you again. I know that I'll come to you for advice. I know that you're going to give me guidance. And I know that you're going to continue to make a difference in the world, because that was what you were destined to do. And if there was any person who was going to heaven, word on the street is, it would be you, like beaming right up there. So anyway, good luck to you on your retirement. Wish you the best with your wife. She's been ever so patient with you. I know your family can't wait to have all of your time. The constituents are at a loss. We're at a loss. But it's been a great ride. And so I just say this with the utmost respect, that I love you.
The county has been well-served by your decades of service, and you will be missed. Congratulations on your retirement.
Don, I know I'm joining many others in congratulating you on not just retirement, but more importantly, your years of service to our community and to our county. And as a member of the board for the last dozen years and having the opportunity to serve with you, but also learn from you, I can tell you, it's been an incredible honor. I consider you not just a friend, but a valued and dear mentor. I think every freshman-elected person should have someone like you in their corner. And I'm so glad that you and I established the bond that we did over the years, together trying our best to serve the people of Sacramento County. I know that in retirement, in your years after service on our board, you'll stay busy. And I certainly would not be surprised if on occasion, we continue to hear from you from time to time. I know that your mind is one of those encyclopedic traps, if you will. You know so much about this county, especially its budget, which I think you and I have spoken about so many times before, which is really one of the paramount responsibilities that we have as members of the Board of Supervisors. And I've learned a lot about the budget through you and with you. But I hope you do come to chambers once in a while, or perhaps call in, or send us a, I know it'll be a handwritten note, not one that's generated on the computer. on the computer, far be it from you to begin to advance in your technological skills at this late date. But you'll certainly be known for those handwritten gestures. But again, I just wanted to say a few words of thanks and express my sincerest gratitude to you, my friend, and wish you well. And I hope Brenda can put up with you. So, with that, love you, man, and don't be a stranger.
Hi, Dawn. I'm so excited that we get to celebrate your exemplary work and the truly kind human that you are. I've enjoyed working with you on ensuring the health and success of the Delta, its communities and its way of life, a phrase that I learned from you. I'll never forget the time that I attended a holiday party the first week that I started at the county. I was standing next to Supervisor Yi. And having learned that I was new to the county and that I was working on legislative matters, he'd asked if I knew what the BDCP was. And of course, I didn't know at that time. And, and I looked confused and I said, "No, I don't know what the BDCP was." And he laughed at my expense. And he said, "Well, you better figure it out." Of course, I didn't know that night that I would be working so closely with you on these issues. All those press release editing sessions, the trips to Washington DC and across the state, talking to federal and state elected leaders and their staff, to editorial boards, teaching them about the alternatives to the Delta Tunnel project and all the great work of the DCC. The meeting with Governor Newsom and the state's Delta Caucus leaders was memorable. In fact, I think that day, we all learned that the governor actually does have perfect hair. I will fondly remember the car rides to meetings. And that's where I learned, first learned of your love of music. In fact, in one of those car rides, you had asked what I was listening to and then asked me to turn up the volume, but it wasn't to your satisfaction. So, you grabbed the knob yourself and you cranked it up. These are such wonderful memories and I'm so thankful to have had them with you, Dawn. You also brought all the laughs on our last DC trip. This is where I got, I dispensed a yahoo, which I didn't know wasn't chocolate milk. And of course, everyone laughed at that. But what made them really laugh was when you screamed "Yahoo!" through the halls and outside of the Rayburn Office Building, which echoed off of the building. Dawn, thank you for these moments and thank you for your servant leadership. You truly are someone that embodies what it means to be a servant leader. You put people first. You listen to their needs and concerns. And you do everything you can to try to address them. Anyone that takes a look at your body of work can attest to the contributions that you've made in improving the lives of the people that live in your district and that live throughout the county. Thank you for putting others first and for serving this community with passion, integrity and care. And thank you, maybe most importantly, for your friendship. I wish you well.
Hey, Dawn. Michelle Callejas here from Child, Family and Adult Services. Throughout the years of service, you have been such a strong advocate for our community, especially in the area of social services and issues impacting children, families, adults and older adults. During the recession, when all departments were faced with devastating cuts, you worked so hard to preserve services for children, families, older adults and adults with disabilities, some of our most vulnerable community members. When the county was no longer able to sustain the Senior Nutritional Program or Meals on Wheels, you immediately moved forward to shift operations to a nonprofit provider. You supported Sacramento County in entering the Title IV E waiver. And with that, we were able to make tremendous investments in prevention services, permanency services, and added additional staff in order to reduce caseloads for our social workers. You also supported and continue to support the Black Child Legacy Campaign and our Cultural Broker Program. All of those programs and investments started in 2015. And since then, we have reduced entries into foster care by 60%. And we've reduced the overall number of children living away from their families by 42%. And most importantly, we also reduced racial disparities for African-American children and families. You were part of that, Dawn. You supported that work and we're very grateful. You will be missed, Dawn. You... You will be remembered for your great sense of humor, your fair and balanced approach, your respect for others, even in disagreement, and I probably should say especially in disagreement, and most importantly, your kindness. And then this political climate of polarization and hostility, it was so refreshing and appreciated. Thank you for that. So, I wish you all the best in retirement, Dawn. You will be missed. I hope to see you around the community. God speed.
Supervisor Natoli, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for your years of service, not only in supervi, as being a supervisor for District Five, but the policies and the decisions you've made that cover the entire unincorporated county. On behalf of the Department of Human Assistance, who, as you know, we serve one out of every three in the community, thank you. We wish you the best in your retirement. We want to take this opportunity to hope you and your family have the, take time for yourselves to catch up, enjoy dinner, enjoy all of the things that you may have missed over your tenure, and we hope the best for you.
Hey, Dawn. This is Anne Marie Schubert. I've had the honor of being the District Attorney while you have been on the Board of Supervisors. And I came in in 2015. And, you know, I thought a lot about the last eight years of working with you in the board, in the county, on not just some of the challenges, but some of the greatest achievements I'd like to believe we've had in this county. One of the things that I have come to respect about you, admire, kind of look to for leadership, is that you are the consummate professional. I don't think there's any other elected official that I've seen, and no disrespect to anybody else, that has gone to more community events than Dawn Natoli. And that's been such a keen way for me to learn, because at the end of the day, we are public servants to our entire community. So, it was a pleasure to see you out in the community at almost every event that could possibly be had and to learn from you, to be inspired by your dedication and your public service. You know, over the last several years, there's no question, we've had our ups and downs in terms of budgets and all those things. But all the while, you have led this county with dignity and respect. And at the end of it all, what I think is the most important thing is that you have led by one vision, and that is public service to your community and to everyone you represent. So, congratulations on an incredible career. I know your history is long and deep in this community. I know you came in when Jan Scully came in, and that tells us the breadth of your experience and your dedication. So, thank you for your service. Thank you for teaching me. And thank you for everything that you've done for Sacramento County. And congratulations, Dawn.
Hi Supervisor Natoli. Looks like it's the event that nobody thought would actually happen. You are retiring. And that's a really big deal. I don't believe there are too many people left who can remember the county when you weren't here. As a matter of fact, there's probably nobody left who can remember the county when you weren't here. Twenty-eight years as an elected supervisor, another 16 years as Chief of Staff for Toby Johnson. That's an incredible 44-year career and dedication to the county. I'm coming up on 35 years and I can't even imagine what 44 years would feel like. And all the time that I've worked with you, I've always appreciated the frank conversations and discussions we've had, usually on a Friday afternoon about 4:30. And regardless of whether we had the same perspective on an issue, you were always just very personable, respectful and collegiate in trying to find a solution. I remember a time when we were getting ready to go on a DCC Delta Bus Tour and I told you, "You know, for a politician, you're a pretty nice guy." You laughed and I laughed. And I still have my job, so I think the compliment was taken as intended. But in all seriousness, I wish you well in retirement. Good luck on completing all those long-delayed house projects. And I expect to hear from you as a concerned retiree from District Five. Take care, Dawn.
On behalf of the Clerk's Office, we have your favorite candy.
And we have determined the necessity to hear your off-agenda item.
And we approve your off-agenda item by unanimous vote.
We're changing public comments to 30 seconds per person.
Don't take a recess for too long, because it won't be the same without you.
Thank you for having COBs back and happy retirement.
And this message comes with all of our love and from our hearts. And the Clerk adjourns the meeting.
Well, I've got a lump in my throat, so I'm not going to try to say too much here. I just, thank you for all the sentiments in that video and for sharing and the walk down memory lane. And I know that a lot of work went into that. So, so, so thank you for, again, for, for sharing. And I'll just say that, and I got a chance to say maybe goodbye one more time. But I, that my takeaway from certainly my time with the county will have been the people that I've worked with, the people that I've known, some of those that have passed on, and the people that we've all served. And it's been a tremendous honor. And yes, like anything else, and you all know, because you're all dedicated public servants and all the folks that are on there and many that I'm sure that aren't, or that weren't on the video. But it just, it's been a tremendous honor to have served the people of this county, but to serve with all of you and all those that have preceded you and those that will succeed me and certainly succeed all of us. And I want to just say real quickly, because one of the photographs was with Toby Johnson and myself. And because of him giving me the opportunity, nearly 44 years ago now, to have had the opportunity to serve as his administrative assistant at the time, and obviously, the years that I was able to spend with him and with the county organization, and then the last nearly 28 years as a member of the Board of Supervisors, I give credit to him and certainly to people in my life, all of you around this table, people that are in the audience, people that were on the video and many, many others, as I said, that aren't, who, again, have helped me and helped serve the people of this county so ably and capably. And whether it's been through good times or rougher times, I think I was always, you know, carry with me, carried with me the assurance that folks were here to do their best to perform their responsibilities and duties, but also that, you know, there's a tremendous caring and a tremendous obligation and commitment to the people of this community. And if you'd asked me 44 years ago, you know, what my life would have been, you know, over the course of that, you know, I probably couldn't have told you. But looking back on that, I would just tell you that I've been so very, very blessed in so many ways. And you were all a blessing in my life. And again, looking at some of those photos, you know, you kind of forget what you did on Saturdays and Sundays, but that was a reminder of some of the things that you were doing. But again, it's been a tremendous honor to have served with all of you. And before I get choked up here, I'm just going to say thank you. It's with much love and affection to all of you that I just want to state my gratitude. And, and I know you'll be here long after I'm gone, continuing to serve the people of this county. And you don't have to worry about me being a regular caller. I say, I might send you a letter from time to time. So, but again, thank you for the trust and the faith as colleagues, as someone who, you know, has been a member of this board, that you've placed in me as well. I mean, you know, again, it's the faith and trust that the people of this county put into five of us as board members. But then that's certainly emulated through all of you. And so, I know this county is in tremendously good hands. And I have every bit of confidence that you'll go on to continue to serve this, this community in ways that are, that are great. So, so, thank you again for the tribute. As I say, it's a little overwhelming. It's very humbling. And again, I just, with much love and affection, I thank you so very much. Okay. I think I heard the Clerk adjourned, Clerk adjourned the meeting already?
I think I did.
Did you? Okay. What we got? See, Kim's coming forward.
Ms. Napa is coming to the podium.
Sorry, just can I make public comment here?
Sure. I thought you already did this, Mama.
You've got 19 minutes.
That's right. Three-minute rule goes away. Go right ahead.
So, first of all, there were a lot of people who wanted to be in the video and just couldn't, because we had a really limited window of when we could do it. So, between conferences and other meetings, we just, and also, we would have been here a couple more hours with all of us. So, we've got a feature-length film. But I did want to, I did want to acknowledge and give credit to the D-Tech folks who put that video together, who did all the filming. They are here today, and I know they're going to hate this, but I want to point them out. We've got Sylvia Penny here. We've got Tony Sylvia in the back. And then Josh Volker. They, they put a lot of time and effort into this and really wanted to make it a nice video for you. So, I, we hope you enjoyed it.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, I'll turn it back to you.
It's now county executive comments.
Yes, county executive comments.
Well, I'll be brief. I, too, want to thank everyone that helped put this day together, because it takes a lot of folks to do that. I want to thank Flo and all of her staff, the D-Tech staff. We could not have made this day happen without them. I also want to thank Dave for all the work that he put into and the ongoing effort on this development review process. It's, it's been a heavy lift already and it's just beginning. So, I want to thank him for that. And then I really want to thank all of you, the board members, for your really great engagement today. We got exactly what we needed from you today. And we'll have to get more. But I think it was really a great interactive conversation. And we really appreciate that and needed that. And then, Dawn, I don't know what happened. Pieces of my video got cut out. So, I just really want to thank you for everything. And I'll say more to you later, because you're going to have to deal with this for the next couple of months, as you know.
And you're all put up with it. That's the thing. I feel bad, because some of you've been in other studies, but...
No, it's, it's quite a rise. But thank you. Thank all of you. I think it was a good day.
It was a very good day. Thanks. Okay, board members, any announcements? Phil?
Yeah. Thank you, Dawn. I just want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Emily Halcon, who's not here, I don't believe, and Siobhan, who I think left. They have been instrumental in various community meetings, some of which I've been with my colleagues recently on the subject of homelessness and what the county is attempting to do in terms of expanding our state, say, capacity. They really have been going over and above lately and they deserve a lot of thanks for working the nights and helping us answer the questions of our constituents and participating in sometimes very passionate discussion with our, with those that we serve. So, just wanted to publicly thank both of them in particular, along with representatives from the Sheriff's Department and the DA's Community Prosecution Team, as well as all of our community partners as well, that have shown an interest in what we're trying to do on the homeless front. Thanks.
Thanks, Phil. Any other board member? Yeah, Patrick?
Yeah, I just want, Dawn, you might have noticed that I was edited out of the film. Apparently, they said that my comments were not family-friendly, but my heart was in it.
I know. Well, we had a chance to ride together in a plane, so you shared with me some of those non-friendly, family-friendly comments. But no, thanks, Patrick. Yep. All right. Any other comments? If not, then just my way of credit, too. I know that our tech team did a good, a great job. I think some of those photos, Rick Sloan has stalked me for the last 30 years. So, so, at any rate, credit, you know, in a, in a nice way. He's always snapping photos. And I want to thank certainly Rick and anybody else who contributed photos to that. So, it'll be a great memory to take away with me. So, okay. Well, again, big thanks to everybody in the front and rear of the room and all those that aren't here to hear the thanks. But it was, it was a very good day. It was an outstanding retreat. And I think, as Anne said, I think it was productive and certainly sets the stage and tone for some, you know, good things to come after this. So, unless there's any other business, do we have any, we have nobody on the phone, since we don't have a phone today. And...
No one's on the phone and we have no public comments.
We got the 30-second rule now. So, anyway. Okay. With that, without belaboring, then thank you all. Have safe travels. We are adjourned.